Morning Carroll County, it's Commissioner Ed Rothstein. It's March eighteenth, happy belated Saint Patrick's Day. Not sure why we have an echo, but I think that should subside. Okay, and as we always do, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and take a moment of silence. But also before we do that, welcome in our newest citizen in Carroll County, Laney Mae Stahl. Very happy mazel tov to the Wentz family and a beautiful baby is now part of Carroll County. So let's just moment of silence, think of, you know, the strength and courage of everyone going through these challenging times. With that, let's stand. Okay, great way to start a Thursday. Let's start with Priority Carroll and Commissioner Wentz, let's start with you.
Okay, good morning again, and thank you Commissioner Rothstein for that shout out for that beautiful new granddaughter. Yeah, that's so that positive things in the in the middle of this pandemic are things that should be taken hold of and really appreciated, so I thanks, thank you very much. Little something different here today for Priority Carroll. Speaking of the pandemic, we're actually going live here this morning with a gentleman who needs to be recognized here for the incredible amount of great things that he's brought to Carroll County. And the fact that his farm is now considered a century farm in the state of Maryland, which you don't get too many of those. But I'm pleased today to be joined by Mr. Carroll Bish, who his name, if you don't know Carroll, you know his name. For folks like me that grew up in the Pleasant Valley area, you knew exactly who Carroll Bish was and you knew who the Bish family was. But I'm pleased to also be joined by Kim Froch and her husband John. John is loving the fact that he's on camera this morning, so for the record, I just wanted to put that in there. We are honored that we have a century farm now in Carroll, and that's the Bish farm. And I'm going to turn this over to our Director of HR, Kim Froch, and let her give a little bit of history here on on Mr. Bish and what he has accomplished over the years. So Kim, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, so first a little bit of, I can take this off.
Yeah, you can take that, yeah.
Okay, so the Bish family has been farming in Carroll County since the late seventeen hundreds. So obviously at that point in time, it was still Frederick County. They've been very involved in the farming community. One of the big ventures was R.G. Bish and Brothers, that was a flour and feed mill in Westminster in Commissioner Frazier's district. The business later evolved into Farmers Fertilizer and Feed, and then was ultimately sold to southern states. The original location of that mill was sold to the city of Westminster as a water source, and it was actually titled the Citizens Water and Power Company of Westminster. So that that was the property that they purchased for that, which is now where the water treatment plant is. Okay, so in eighteen seventy-nine Carroll's father, or excuse me, grandfather and his uncle purchased the farm on Old Botman's Valley Road. That farm then passed to his dad. In addition to running the farm, his dad also sold fertilizer for Acme Guano Company and was finalizing a Farquhar Farm Equipment Dealership. Unfortunately, he passed suddenly from medical complications due to appendicitis in nineteen thirty-six. So Carroll's mother, along with then five-year-old Carroll, were left with the farm to run. In nineteen thirty-six, that that was a feat in itself. Mrs. Bish ran that farm successfully until Carroll was eighteen and he could take it over as soon as he graduated from high school. The next year, he opened up Mount Pleasant Packing Company, which is a canary up at the end of Stone Road. And he ran that until he got out of that business in the early nineties. So we actually brought one of his products, Tawny Town Hominy, that he canned back then. He canned tomatoes, hominy, plums, he did for himself and other companies around the state of Maryland. He sold product to Co-op, Safeway, A&amp;P, which then became super, A&amp;P became Super Fresh. Yes, A&amp;P became Super Fresh. He was also involved with Farmer's Supply Company that used to be at the corner of Liberty Street. There where O'Lordens is at. And he continues to farm that farm, corn, wheat, soybeans, hay, straw, so he's still going at it. And it's interesting, his his great-grandfather actually provided the property for the Mount Pleasant School, which was also at the end of Stone Road. That schoolhouse still stands, the one-room schoolhouse. His great-grandfather provided the ground and all the building materials so that the kids in that area would have a school. And then when they decided to close that and send them to Charles Carroll, he purchased the school back, the school building back. So that's still in the Bish family, and that was actually used after the school was closed. Carroll used that to label the cans and for storage, so the building still stands and will continue to be there, and Carroll's mother actually taught there as well. So it's a lot of history in Carroll County for Carroll and his family, and continues to be that way. And we're looking forward to a whole lot more years with him farming and hanging out with us.
So Chris Swam, if you'd bring up the the certificates that are the proclamations, please, that Mr. Bish received, and he got a, he got a ton of them. He got one from the, well.
Secretary Barton Felder.
Yeah, Secretary Barton Felder, he got one from, he got one from.
The governor.
The governor.
And then the delegates and the senator.
Right, so he's been showered with all kinds of gifts here over the last several weeks, and this is quite an honor. Not only for for the Bish family and and the Frocks, but for Carroll County. And that's why we wanted to bring him in today, because this is, this is a unique thing for our county. And it says a lot for our heritage here in Carroll. This is what we are all about, and Mr. Bish is the perfect example of that. So before we hear from Mr. Bish, Commissioner Rothstein, I'll turn it over to you, and we can go down through the commissioners if you'd like, and I know Commissioner Weaver, this is near and dear to his heart as well. So I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll hear from Mr. Bish.
Okay, no, I really appreciate, and the only thing I have to say is, sir, you lead by example. And, you know, you are, you know, if you're looking in the dictionary for community, you're going to find a picture of you and the family. So I really appreciate all that you've done for our community and continue to do. You know, it's not about words, it's about deeds, and you have shown through deeds and led by example. So thank you so much, and thanks for all bringing this to our attention. Commissioner Boucher?
Good morning, gentlemen, Mr. Bish, it's an honor to have you in front of us. I believe that, you know, a lot of people don't recognize that George Washington and Thomas Jefferson were both farmers. And Thomas Jefferson had stated that one of the most noble trades and endeavors you can engage in is farming. Feed people, maintain substance for our civilization, and it's a tremendous honor to have you here before. So thank you very much for all you've done in the community. You epitomize the greatness of our county, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Frazier.
Hey, Mr. Bish, I'd just like to thank you and your family for all you've done for Carroll County and the fact of everything that Kim has said, how you're interwoven in the fabric of the county. It's just tremendous that what you've done and your family has done for us, I really do appreciate it. But I have to say, I hate hominy, I can't eat it, but other than that, thank you very much.
So you don't want me to bring you a can of hominy?
Yeah.
I can't even look at that can, take it off screen.
Just give the second can to Commissioner Wentz, he'll he'll take it.
Yeah, I'll take that, because there's nothing like pudding and hominy.
We got a few cases.
Yeah, so, and I'm not a big fan of plums, Dennis, so there's that, but anyway, so.
Those two cases are from nineteen seventy-four. Commissioner Weaver?
Commissioner Frazier still thinks hominy grows in trees. And I just have one question, did Wentz attend that schoolhouse? Out there, but Mr. Bish, I just want to say thank you, I did use you this morning, and we recorded a podcast with Mr. Bish, and we're going to, I hope people can listen to it on Sunday morning, I'd like to air that one first and see if we can get that out this Sunday, swap places with Commissioner Wentz, and people can hear the Bish story. And and we stream it throughout the week, so it's it's interesting, your history, the history of canning factories in Carroll County. And you guys may not be aware, but, you know, every little community had a canning factory, a peaviner or something in the area that provided work in in rural Carroll County. And today they're all gone, but it is a part of the heritage, and that can of hominy is worth a lot, far as I'm concerned, as far as our history. And Kim assured me it was still good after all these years, so I think it'd be good. So thank you, Mr. Bish, for what you've done for Carroll County and what you're going to continue to do. And you, your century farm says it all, thank you.
And I'll tell you, I don't often say it, but I'm looking forward to listening to this podcast, not for Commissioner Weaver, but sir, for all the things that you're sharing, and sit back and and really take the opportunity to listen to this podcast. So thank you, Dick, for putting that together. Kim, any final thoughts before we hand it over to the man of the hour?
I just appreciate the recognition for Carroll. Like I said, he's been here for a long time, his family, you know, with he and his mother, came through a lot to keep that farm and keep it going. And I think that says a lot about his character and his great-grandmother, who was was a Kraus, his mom was a Kraus, so they as well were big in the community, so I don't want to diss the Krauses, because they were very big as well. So, you know, just thank you for everything, it's been a pleasure, and we're looking forward, like I said, a long time. His grandmother was a hundred and six months when she passed, and his mom was just shy of a hundred, so we got a while to go.
So, sir, if you, you know, would like, please share a few words, definitely would like to hear what you have to say.
You want to say anything?
No, really.
Not really. He's a little shy.
Again, appreciate and thank you so much for being here, we're getting to a level of normalcy. You being here physically definitely helps. So Commissioner Wentz, thank you so much for coordinating this, along with Kim Froch, for making this happen, so thank you so much.
Yep, it's our pleasure, and, you know, it's quite an honor to be sitting in the room with Mr. Bish. His family has meant a lot to a lot of folks out in Pleasant Valley, and I told him this morning that my father-in-law always spoke very highly of him. He did, he did a lot of work for Carroll, and a lot of folks that I grew up with worked at the canning factory, so.
John's, well, Christopher's fifth generation that worked for Carroll.
Right.
On John's side, and third on mine.
Right, and in next week's session, on the first thing we're going to do is we're all going to eat hominy. So get ready, get ready, and we're going to force-feed Frazier, okay?
You're going to have seconds and thirds on that one, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, let's move into one more recognition, and that is Jeff Casway, are you on, along with Andy?
Andy's there.
Okay, Andy? And Jeff also just arrived, okay, so Jeff, why don't you start this and share with us what you'd like about Ms. Wanda?
Sounds great, thank you so much for your time today, there's Wanda, how you doing? All right, we're here today to congratulate Wanda Brandonburg on her retirement after thirty-plus years of loyal service here to the citizens of Carroll County. She's spent ninety-nine point five percent of her career in the Bureau of Utilities. The Bureau may have Bureau Chiefs, superintendents and project managers, but the heartbeat of utilities has always been one. For those who remember the TV show MASH, Wanda is our radar Riley. You need a random, if you need random information about a random project, Wanda would just reach over the shelf, over on her desk, and hand you the file before you could complete your request. Her record keeping, experience with maintenance and budgets, and keeping everyone straight on critical deadline items sets her second to none in the industry. We're blessed to have also, just want to make mention to Crystal Kemp, who's had the opportunity to be mentor in the world of utilities following the Wanda ways of operating utilities. And while, you know, these are large shoes to be filled, Crystal will take, take the soon-to-be-vacated position to be the new number one with no hesitation. We cannot be happier for Wanda today, as over the years, she can wait, you know, you know, and over the next few days, she'll be able to wake up in the morning, simply spend all day with her husband Tim, her eight grandchildren and the two great-grandchildren, with another on the way, and forget that one. She's plus have a wonderful family who has supported her over her career, you know, throughout her career here with Carroll County. Will admit, working with over years, Wanda shared so much about her family. We're also going to amuse your family too, Wanda, because we're part of it. But now it's time for you to take time to garden, hit some auctions and go camping, and not worry about Mondays anymore. Few more tidbits about Wanda to share with everybody is, she has dog name Gizmo, which I love that name. Three cats, Homer, baby girl and sugar, she plans on continuing to get together with her, with her wonderful friends, cowork, past coworkers for lunches, can't forget the lunches. And maybe take some time to organize the house, but, you know, that's, who needs to do that? You know, your office has been enough, and spend a lot of time with her growing family. So I and the entire Bureau of Utilities, Public Works team, miss you, Wanda. But we cannot be happier for you at this time. We're all blessed to have had the opportunity to work for you, as I've always said, I've always worked for you, not with you. And wish you a long and healthy retirement. And I'm going to pass it over to Andy for a few, for a few words here.
Thank you, Jeff, and good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure being in front of you in a celebratory fashion, rather than anticipating questions that I might be grilled at over projects for our presentation, so this is a nice change of pace. I echo what Jeff said one hundred percent. Wanda has been an absolute treasure to have here in this office, and as I've said to her several times, I'm very happy for her on a personal level, level, as is my staff, but she will most definitely be missed on a professional basis. She's definitely earned her retirement after her long career with us, and I wish her the absolute best in her golden years. So thank you very much, Wanda, I appreciate it.
Andy, be careful, you know, when you say things like that, we can throw an audible out there and tag you very quickly on it, but.
I did have one question.
But not in this case, what I like to do is go around the room, some virtual, some in the room, and share some thoughts, Commissioner Frazier.
Wanda, I'd just like to thank you for your thirty-plus years of work at Carroll County and Utilities, thank you for all you've done, and enjoy your retirement. Actually, I'm starting to get a little worried about Carroll County, we have so many people with all this experience leaving right now. Another void is being created here, someone else will step up. It's really starting to bother me a little bit, not that it's your fault, Wanda, but enjoy your retirement, but it's on my mind.
Absolutely, and so I think it's on all our minds, and, you know, appreciate bringing that up, Commissioner Weaver.
You know, Wanda, thank you for the years of service, you are, you know, what Carroll County is all about. I think hard work, dedication, we're seeing it in Priority Carroll today everywhere. But I guess this is not the time to let you know that we just canceled all retirements. No, but seriously, I do wish you well, enjoy your retirement, spend time with the grandkids and the animals, and you know, there's nothing better, you've earned it, enjoy it, thank you.
Commissioner Wentz?
Wanda, listen, you again are the the perfect example of why Carroll County is what it is, and we appreciate your years of service here. Thank you so much. When we were just made that statement about retirements being canceled, about twelve people just fell off their chairs. So now we're going to have, you know, we're going to have some medical things we have to do, but whatever, anyway. Wanda, thank you, you know, again, you've been a huge part here of the team, and we can't thank you enough. So Godspeed to you and your retirement, as I tell a lot of folks, I tried that retirement for about six months. What I can remember of it, it's pretty good stuff, so enjoy.
Commissioner Boucher?
Wanda, thanks for your service, the sounds of it, it looks like you're having a race with Commissioner Wentz on having the most grandchildren. You're truly blessed, grandchildren are wonderful, they're like rental children, you give them back, so cherish the moments you have with them. And since you have a pet named Gizmo, I advise you not to get that little critter wet, he'll turn into a gremlin. And since you're like radar, I'm sure you hear the choppers coming before everyone else. So enjoy your retirement, it's a pleasure to have you with the county all these years, and I share my colleagues' concern about all this wonderful knowledge and experience we have going into retirement. It's all be, we are going to be very hard pressed to replace individuals such as you. So bless your soul and enjoy your grandchildren.
Thank you, sir.
And without being repetitive, really just saying the two words, thank you. Thank you for all you've done, and support to our community, support to our county, support to our team. And you will be missed, and really enjoy all of your future endeavors. So with that, Wanda, if you'd like, say a few words, and if you want, you can even roast Jeff and Andy, and we'll be happy to hear that as well.
I would just like to say that this, this job has been a blessing to me. It feels like I just started yesterday, and I I felt the greatest desire working for the people, I was born and grew up in this county, and I feel it's the best place to be. And it's been my pleasure working for you all and working for all the citizens of Carroll County. It's, it doesn't seem like a job, so I've enjoyed every minute that I've been here, and I thank you all.
Okay, super, thank you, Wanda. Okay, let's move on to Priority Carroll, and for us, rather quickly, I think we have a very full agenda for this morning, and then going into an afternoon session. So with that said, Commissioner Boucher?
Good morning, thank you very much, well, here we go, I did a tour of the Crimgold Park to inspect the beaver mitigation devices we've put in place. I want to give a special thanks to Director Daggett, Deputy Director Green, Facilities Manager McDonald, and John Hobbs of the Friends of Crimgold Park Association. It's really good to go out there and actually see what's taking place, to see the the drain system being put in place to stabilize. There's one of the beaver dams, they've had to lower the water to get the devices in place, but there's still water and food and all for the animals to survive on, and once all these devices are in place, they'll fill them back up. So the the water was not completely drained, it was a compromise to get these devices in, and we're hoping it'll be very successful. It was a really great tour, and I think these tours helped show the public what is going on, because a lot of times, there's a lot of misinformation going on out there. You see, there's still water in the pond, so I thank everyone for that tour. And then I did a tour of the Pine Run Nature Center, this was very impressive, I remember taking my daughters there years ago. So I thank everyone for that tour. And then I did a tour of the Pine Run Nature Center. This was very impressive. I remember taking my daughters there years ago to see the, the birds and stuff. The county is using funds that don't stress the taxpayers or grant funds and 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 all that. And we are utilizing our county employees. We have a lot of skilled employees out there that can do brickwork, woodwork. Matter of fact, there's custom cabinetry in the the building that they built. One of our employees built the reception, here it is, the reception table. The wood on top there is from a barn or a farm building from the seventeen hundreds. They were able to reclaim it, uh refinish it and build a cabinetry. And you can see some of the lighter colored wood behind there, the cabinets, that is oak wood that they harvested from the Hoshawab Nature Center. So it's a lot of utilization of indigenous wood and the labor of our employees, so it saved us a lot of money. And the way to redoing the layout, they're making it more spacious and open. There were some things in the building that restricted flow. There's one of the owls. They have brand new facilities to maintain these birds of uh prey. We have owls and hawks. And these are not just animals that have been captured and and basically imprisoned. These are animals that have been injured and brought to the county. And I guess the Department of Natural Resources is looking for home for them because they cannot survive on their own. Some of them have been injured, some, some rude people shot, some of them, I think. So the county is doing a very humane thing, maintaining the the life of these animals. It's a wonderful place, wonderful place to go visit. I encourage as many people as possible to go out there and visit the nature center. Also, real quick, I want to state that I toured the Veteran Independence Project with Director Sidoc. I think some of my colleagues have as well. Great project, doing things for the veterans. Real quick, I want to run over the list of some of the new county employees that have been hired. Robert Stockdale, Facility Supervisor, Daryl Dobkins Jr., Correctional Deputy. Jonathan Andre, Correctional Deputy. Javier Toro Alomardo, Project Coordinator and Seth Pardeski, paid work experience. So thank you very much and welcome aboard.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Boucher, and thank you for sharing that that was an owl and not another species. So I'm I'm glad you were able to identify that. Uh Commissioner Fraser.
Oh, I don't really have too much this morning, except that we'll have, do have a comment. The pictures that were in line for the ribbon cutting from last week from three ten tempering, the pictures were there and I appreciate you putting them up there. Um but people didn't have masks on and I've got some comments of me, well, where's the mask? The fact is, everyone that was there was COVID tested before they came. Just prior to coming, I think like a day or so prior, they they were fine. Everyone was COVID tested. So that's why they they were felt safe without the mask. I just want to throw that out there. Everything was was social distance, even with the COVID testing, people were still spaced out and all, but that's the reason that there were no masks, because I've had gotten a few comments about that. Now I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
No, and three ten's gonna be a great partner in our community and our county, so I appreciate you being there. And also Mr. Lyburne, working with the state um in getting them from Kentucky up here. They are bringing, I think, a eighty-five workforce and they're gonna be adding some more.
Right, expecting about a hundred by the time it's all said and done.
Yeah, and outstanding. Um so I appreciate that. Uh Commissioner Weaver.
Uh just a couple uh items I want to mention. Uh you know, we are getting a lot of um concern right now about the budget and I uh appreciate people uh getting in contact with me and their concerns about things, which I is, I like to know about them prior to getting into the budget anyway. And uh just uh we had a meeting this week, the Veterans Advisory Council, and um I kind of started a a little bit of a campaign with our podcast program. I'm gonna invite Commissioner Rothstein to join me in that. Uh and and we're gonna bring members of the Advisory Council in. Uh some of these guys are unbelievable, where they've been, what they've done and what they're doing for veterans in Carroll County. We're starting, um I guess, I I have a personal campaign to get the word out of what's happening in the Advisory Council, what we have available to veterans in the county. And uh and we want to keep promoting that. And the other issue, I guess, Pine Run Park's coming up and uh I I thank the people for notifying uh me all their concerns uh with Pine Run. I didn't get to all of them. I mean, there's so many uh comments here. But I think we, as we get through this, uh their their minds will be eased as they hear what we're actually doing and looking at the present time, but because the community concern about that is extremely important. And uh if we don't hear about it, we don't know about it. So uh I I I I certainly appreciate all the people who are getting the word out to all of us, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Commissioner Wance?
Hi. Sorry, I was not paying attention. And it's because Weaver was on and it's be, it was because of that comment he made earlier, just letting everybody know. Uh anyway, uh good morning, everybody. Uh real quick, two things. Um two of our fire companies uh lost some very valuable members uh in the last several days. Uh didn't get a chance uh at our moment of silence to bring them up. Uh but um Mr. Madison from the Reese Fire Company uh who worked there for many, many years, I think um I think Ray worked there for about thirty years at Reese. Uh just an incredible individual. Uh and I want to give uh our our sympathies and condolences to to the Madison family and to uh the Reese Fire Company. And also at Pleasant Valley, uh they lost um uh a wife of one of of one of our our active members, Gail Smith, who was also active in the fire company and auxiliary there. Um so we're we're uh we're we're wanting to make sure that we keep all of those in our in our thoughts and prayers. Uh so uh two, two great individuals that spent their life giving back to Carroll County. So uh you know, uh want to make sure we continue that. Uh it's been a, it's been a whirlwind of meetings for me over the last week, um and actually over the last several days. Uh ESAC meeting last night was about three hours long. Prior to that, I was at the Community College meeting. Uh and the day before that, I was at the planning and zoning meeting. And I say this because there's a lot of great things that are going on behind the scenes. Uh but the uh planning and zoning folks will be handing uh or have handed the solar uh issue back to us now. And I've got to say that the uh the discussion, the dialogue, everything that occurred at the planning and zoning level uh from that group is priceless. And you will see that uh when when we get to that on our agenda uh in the coming week or two or three or whenever it's coming to us. They uh they did an amazing job and did a lot of legwork for us. Uh and really set the stage well. So that's a great group of folks on planning and zoning and they took that to the nth degree and I and you will see and you will appreciate why I'm saying this, because it was truly remarkable where they uh where where they went. Uh really quick, uh everybody knows I'm all about public safety. Uh we did that crazy clock thing again over the weekend. I'm still not sure why we do that, but we do it. Uh and that means it's a little darker in the mornings now. Please watch out for the school buses and the kids that are waiting for them because we've seen a lot more kids going back to school now. So uh be mindful of that. And uh I think Weaver changed his clock because he's here this morning, so I guess he did. Uh or didn't have to be told. Uh and finally, for me, uh it's it's important, I think, that we remain vigilant with all of our best practices. We're seeing uh a lot more folks get uh vaccinated, but um we also have seen that uh I I saw a report today that that the amount of cases has plateaued. And Europe, if we look at them, we usually can can see what's happening in the future because they're about three or four weeks ahead of us over there. A lot of those countries have gone down on, have have gone to lockdown again. And that's very concerning. So we have got to keep uh, we we've got to remain vigilant here. We've got to keep doing the mask thing, uh washing the hands and uh making sure that we're doing the right thing, uh you know, a- as far as not spreading this ridiculous uh disease. So uh with that, uh we'll turn it back over. Thank you.
I I appreciate it. Um I think we may start calling you the hall monitor uh for safety, to make sure nobody's running in the halls and they can trip on their shoelaces. Because Commissioner Weaver, we have to watch out for. Not saying he's old or anything, but just, you know.
Can I, can I get a badge? Can I, can I, can I get a badge, Mr. President?
Oh, I'll I'll give you a badge, all right. In in the military, we call them blood wings, trust me. I I'll put them on for you. Um a a couple of things, uh and and I appreciate the uh the planning and zoning uh comment because they are doing such a great job. A couple other uh volunteer boards, like the Ag Board and the Veterans uh Boards, I mean, they're just phenomenal. I attended both. Uh the Ag Board on Tuesday evening, the the VAC on uh Tuesday afternoon with Commissioner Weaver. Just the the dialogue that's happening uh between those boards and really focused on community. I uh I shared with Secretary Owings and Deputy Secretary uh Finn, which is the VA. Uh some of the results from the the VAC meeting, along with uh the work we are doing. We have three uh veteran support officers. We are doing incredible work with transportation. Uh I mean, so much is being done through Citizen Services, but also being done through partnership with Citizen Services, our government and everyone else. And uh Commissioner, uh excuse me, Commissioner, Secretary Owings uh replied very quickly back, sharing that money has been allocated and now executed through the BPW, or Public Works, for design and engineering of our veterans home in Carroll County. So it's one thing to have uh it on a line item. It's another thing to execute money, because then you know it's real. And uh they're starting to do some boring and uh, you know, land evaluation of where this home's gonna be. So uh really appreciate the relationship and partnership that we have with them. You know, just to add on, Commissioner Weaver talked about Pine Run and we will talk about that this afternoon. Uh I am incredibly impressed from the town halls from last week on Thursday to where we are today, just on social media. And social media can be, have its evils, but it can also have some real benefit. It went from a nothing to over seventeen hundred, close to two thousand folks on a page that are focused on Pine Run. That's impressive to get a community to rally about a situation. And we're gonna talk much more about that this afternoon. Um but I really am impressed with everything that they had to share and uh we're gonna just continue to move forward. And then to uh add on to Commissioner Wance, it ain't over yet. These masks are not optional. Our dress code is optional. You know, some wear ties, some don't wear ties. We decide what we want to do here. Social distancing and masks are a must. Uh government buildings, public buildings, it ain't our rules. It's uh the state. And if people do not want to wear the masks and they want to be out in public and break the laws, then they should go to the state and say, I am willing to break the law, please change it for me. Uh whether I agree or not agree with this, and I I don't mean to be so forceful about it, but the fact is, we're moving in the right direction. The partnership that we have with the State Health Department and Life Bridge is amazing, getting vaccines. We're getting twenty-four hundred more vaccines from Life Bridge in partnership with our Health Department to vaccinate the seventy-five and over and get us Carroll County to move into sixty-five plus, uh you know, one C um grouping. That, along with these masks, are gonna get us to where we want to go. So some things are optional that we live with, some things are not optional, and you've just got to recognize that. Let's see, everything else, I think we're gonna continue to move on. We're gonna get right into uh if there's any state directives. Um I don't know of any additional ones. Have you heard of anything, uh Commissioner Wance or uh Commissioner Fraser from Mako?
No additional.
No?
Uh no, I, not that I have heard, no.
Yeah, I think uh and uh Ed Singer's on to give us an update. Um you know, we've been talking a lot about this and I just really appreciate the work you and Maggie and the whole team are doing um in understanding what right looks like and driving towards partnerships with uh Life Bridge. Um Leslie Simmons and Garrett Hoover, I mean, these are all just incredible community partners. So thank you so much, Ed. And if you can uh share with us an update on what's happening uh from your perspective and we'll move on from there.
Uh certainly. And uh if I could get the ability to share my slides, that would be great. I don't know who's uh running the control room today. But uh I I got a few things to say before I click on the slides anyway, but I don't see, ah, there we go. Here comes the uh shareability thing. Um I wanted to, first of all, start by giving a a shout out to one of your staff. Uh you know, I I often mention everything that everybody's doing in in the county to help support our response to this and and uh and have talked about a lot of uh agencies and whatnot, but I I really want to give a shout out to Chris LaNotte and uh in Public Works because we've been uh, one of the things that's been important here, and I think a lot of jurisdictions have had essentially one vaccination location and people have to come to them. And we talked very early on about wanting to be able to get out to uh various places in the county. And sometimes we uh, you know, it's easy if you have a a a single location and you set up all your stuff and you leave it there. Um but Chris has been uh working with uh Mark Vigilotti, who's who's been volunteering with us for a long time, to make sure that if we go to Tawny Town and and we have to bring a whole bunch of stuff there, that he gets there and actually helping us set up and and things of that nature. I just wanted to give Chris that shout out. They've been been wonderful. We've we've uh hit all the corners of the county several times now and uh every time we have to go and set up, it's a, it's a lot of work on his part and uh he personally, he's he's very involved and and really appreciate that. I also wanted to uh thank you uh Commissioner Rothstein for the opportunity to have the town hall that we had last week to to talk about. I I think it's important that people in the community understand where things are with uh with COVID nineteen, where we are on vaccinations and and where things are headed. And and that was a good opportunity for us to try to engage the citizens of uh of uh Carroll County. We also have uh Commissioner Rothstein and I are also gonna be on with the Chamber of Commerce at lunchtime today. A little bit of a different focus, more on the businesses and and kind of where things are going with them. Before I get started on my presentation, I just kind of want to share, and I and I heard bits and pieces of uh Commissioners encouraging people to stick with this and I I gotta give credit to Dr. Fauci because I loved his analogy that that I heard him use the other day and it's, you know, we're getting close to the end zone. And uh I I've seen these videos of people in college or in the NFL where where they get to the, close to the end zone and they've been running down the field that's, you know, gonna be a ninety-nine yard touchdown or whatever. Uh as as we get through this pandemic and then they spike the ball at the, at the one yard line. And uh, you know, we're we're getting very close to being able to get through this, but uh if we spike the ball at the one yard line, we're we're not gonna reach our goal. So we've got a ways to go. It it may be, you know, maybe s- early. I I've been thinking, you know, earl- early to late summer, we we may be getting back closer to normal. I don't know exactly what that new normal's gonna look like. But uh vaccinations are getting uh more plentiful and they're they're uh they're getting much more available and I'll talk about that as I get into this. But uh I did want to mention a a couple of things that we've observed here, a couple of outbreaks that we saw. Uh we had a situation here in Carroll County where where there was a uh a funeral, and I can't get into the details of it, but uh there was a funeral and, you know, a lot of times we're comfortable with our family and whatnot. We get close and all it takes is one person to be sick with COVID and potentially spread it to other people. And and out of this funeral, there wound up being five people who wound up hospitalized and a person died. And and so it's it's um, it's important that we keep in mind that COVID's still here. As I share the numbers with you today, you're gonna see that that the the numbers show that COVID's still here. And we need to continue to do what we're doing until we can get a large uh majority of the population vaccinated and uh and and get to that herd immunity that we're looking for. Um the other thing that I'll mention is there was an outbreak. Uh there was a a wrestling tournament in in uh Southern Pennsylvania. And it wasn't the wrestlers that wound up spreading COVID so much as it was the parents that were kind of gathering in little groups and and spreading it one to another. And and um you know, this is, this is the kind of thing that have impact on our community and we that need to keep in mind the uh the 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 impact that these types of events that could have. It's not that we shouldn't be having these types of events. It's that uh what we really need to do is just keep in mind uh keeping people safe. And especially the one thing I can't emphasize enough, if you're feeling sick and you think that you might be a little bit sick, um you know, COVID doesn't start as a as a really intense uh illness. It it could just be a runny nose or or cough or whatever that's 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 unusual and 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 some some uh respiratory issues and and uh you you know, you you may have COVID. So if you're feeling sick, stay home. Don't, don't take the risk of giving it to other people. We need to uh, we need to uh emphasize that with folks that it's it's still important that if you're not feeling well, you shouldn't be uh having close contact with other people. And and as I said, it's not that we shouldn't be having these events. It's that we should be keeping in mind what we need to be be doing while we're we're keeping each other safe during these events. And one of the things I just wanted to mention to you all as Commissioners that I that I'm kind of struggling with is the And one of the things I just wanted to mention to you all as commissioners that I, that I'm kind of struggling with is the, as the rules are changing, I, and, and spring's coming. You know, we're going to want to have outdoor festivals and things. And I think about the wine festival and a lot of the events that we have on Main Street and things like that. The one thing that sticks in my mind that's going to be different and, and these events are going to look a little bit different as we have them. There's some, some of these events are already scheduled and already planned. And, you know, we're, we're trying to get back to a, the closer to normal. We're gradually going to get there. One of the things that's going to look very different is the requirement right now is that if food's served and you have either a temporary license from us or a license from the Health Department to serve food, the expectation is we're, we're used to, you know, if there's a festival on Main Street, having a drink in one hand and a hot dog in the other hand and being unmasked, going down the street, eating and drinking our, our, our food at these festivals. Well, the expectation and the requirement is in, in the state orders right now that if food is served, that people have to go and sit and stay kind of in their pods and, and, and then you unmask and you eat and then you put the mask back on and you can, you can wander around. Having festivals and this is, you know, it's just going to be a difficult change for people to adjust to because we're getting back to closer to normal. People are going to want things to be totally normal like they were before. And, you know, it's not, it's not an acceptable thing for people to be walking around unmasked, eating and drinking. We've, we've got to kind of go off to the side, stay in our pods. And then, you know, we could certainly go around and enjoy the festival and, and that type of thing. But we want to keep from spreading the, the virus. So that's one of the things that's out there and it's going to be a, a, a difficult adjustment as we, as we move into the spring and we get into some of these events. Now eventually some of that may change. I'm, I'm just thinking about, you know, even if we start talking about carnivals and things like that, what that's going to look like. You know, trying to have, have people seated and, and separate it when we're, when we're unmasking and, and partaking of food and drink. That's, that's the focus on those type of things. So I'm going to go ahead and get into the slides. The share button just went away. Can I get that back?
Just a coincidence.
You're still sharing.
Oh, am I? Can you guys, okay, so you guys can see that now?
Now we can't see it, but you're, you're set for presenting.
Uh, I don't see that on my, my screen. Is there?
Do you see that little button at the bottom?
It's, it's, it's not, it's not there anywhere. Can you, can you give it to me again or can you turn it off and turn it back on?
I'm going to do that right now.
There we go. Perfect.
You got it.
All right. So are we seeing the right screen? Can you guys see, you guys can see the presentation?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, great. All right. Try to get through this. I know you guys have a busy agenda today. This is a slide that Maggie said you'd like us to share. It's the school slide and it kind of shows where things are a, as far as the CDC recommendations for the schools. Are, are positivity rates considered to be low, but are, are, are rates of transmission are considered to be what they call substantial? And just wanted to, I, I guess, share this with you because you all wanted to see where, where that is in that, in that range on the CDC. So we're at the kind of, the highest level of, of, of risk in, in, in schools for transmission. So the only thing I really want to say about this side, slide, the, the other thing I want to say is it did mention back on that previous slide, and I'm going to go back there real quick, the, the positivity rate. The positivity rate as of yesterday had risen to four point seven five percent. The only thing I really want to say about this slide is need to realize that where we are with the number of cases that we're seeing in Carroll County is at higher than any other point in the pandemic other than prior to Thanksgiving. Now we hit that huge spike that we had over the holidays and then things seemed to be coming down to, to, to a low point in late, late part of February, but our cases are on the rise again. And, and that's not a good thing. We need to not be complacent and try to make sure that we're, as we're getting people vaccinated. And, and I think the vaccinations and getting outside is going to help, but right now we're, we're, we're on the rise with cases. And that's the fourteen day rolling average, which shows that same trend that I was just mentioning. And this is just by age group. Hospitalizations, I'll say hospitalization wise, the, the hospital's in, in good shape as far as the number of people that they have admitted for COVID right now. They, they are seeing a high volume, but it's not COVID related. So that, that's a good thing. Hopefully the, you know, hospitalizations tend to lag our cases. Hopefully they're not going to see another spiking cases in the hospital, but it's entirely possible, given that our cases are on the rise. Our, our hospitalizations and deaths by age group. And the good news is, is last week was the first week we've had since back in early November that nobody died from COVID. We, we have had a death this week, but last week was the first week since early November where we had no COVID deaths. Our testing at the Ag Center. We had, we had gotten to a low point about, about a month ago. Right now we're averaging about fifty tests per day, three days a week at the Ag Center. And here's the pyramid that I've been sharing with you on a regular basis that talks about these, these different phases. So right now where the Health Department is, is we're wrapping up phase one A and one B. And I'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide. And we've actually, with the, with the hospital's help, as Commissioner Rothstein had mentioned, with this additional twenty-four hundred first doses of Pfizer, we were able to open up to a lot of people in, in the sixty-five plus age group as well as the seventy-five plus age group. So we're working with, with economic development and we're trying to get a hold of businesses to plan for the essential employee vaccinations that we're going to be moving into as, as we get through one C. This is our vaccine distribution chart. We're getting the vaccines out as soon, even, even now, when, when we receive vaccine during a week, we're often using it that same week now. And, and, and it's, it's less than seven days where the vaccine's getting out. We really push things forward. As you can see, last week we administered fourteen hundred fifty-four first doses. The seventeen hundred doses it's shown for this week, that's eleven hundred doses that were allocated to us by, by the state with the Moderna vaccine and six hundred doses that we're going to use on Friday with the, with the Pfizer vaccine that came from the hospital. And then we're going to run two additional clinics with Pfizer in the coming weeks with the hospital's vaccine that they were able to transfer to us. So the important thing that I want people to know is we are getting around the county. If you're seventy-five plus, we definitely want you to reach out to us if you haven't been reached or if you know somebody who's seventy-five plus. I've heard some, some people who, who have changed their mind that weren't originally going to get vaccinated and have now seen that a lot of their peers have been vaccinated and that it's, that the vaccine's safe and it's effective. And so if you're seventy-five and over, we definitely want you to reach out to us with the sixty-five and over. If you haven't signed up on our, on our interest file yet, please sign up. And, and we'll, we'll get you on there. And if you don't have the ability to sign up on the web, please give us a call at our, at our call center and we'll sign you up. So this is the, this is the slide where I'm going to do most of my talking. So the, the older adults seventy-five and over, we've reached over seventy percent of them at this point in time. We have about another six hundred scheduled at those clinics that I was mentioning that are going to be around the county. And everybody's being offered an opportunity at this point in time to be vaccinated if they're over seventy-five. And I'll put this right out there to people. If you're over seventy-five and you haven't been vaccinated or you know somebody who's over seventy-five and you haven't, and they haven't been vaccinated, please call me personally or email me. My email's ed.singer@marilyn.gov. And, and my phone number here at the Health Department's four one oh eight seven six four nine seven four. And that's right here at my desk. And I can't always answer right away, but if, if you leave me a message and, and you're over seventy-five or you know somebody that's over seventy-five that needs to be vaccinated, I'll make sure that they, I'll, I'll personally make sure that they get registered. We have slots in our vaccine clinics that we specifically want to reach them. Go ahead and call me, email me, whatever. We will, we'll, we'll make sure that those people get scheduled and get vaccinated. As far as our education and continuity of government, we had a, we had a first round of continuity of government last Friday. It was, it was five, we put five hundred and fifty people through in a two and a half hour period. I think that's a little tight for the, for the Westminster Senior Center site to, to get that many people through there. If we had a, a larger area to put people through, it might have, it, it went well, but it, it's still, I, I was a little uncomfortable. It seemed a little crowded to me. But we, we did get five hundred and fifty people through in a, in a, in a two and a half hour period. We offered vaccination to all the higher education people in Carroll County, including McDaniel and Carroll Community College. And we're picking up some stragglers even this week that are either continuity of government or, or higher education. So that group's essentially done. Carroll County Public Schools, they vaccinated a, an additional, we vaccinated additional five hundred plus people on, on yesterday. And there's a clinic scheduled for next week to, to finish up. Everybody that's in the Carroll County Public School System that wanted to be vaccinated should have had an opportunity to be vaccinated at this point in time. If, again, if you're, if you're a public school teacher and, and you haven't been vaccinated, you really need to reach out through your administration. But if you're having a problem, I put my phone number and my email out there. Let me know. I, I, I had somebody who told me they couldn't get vaccinated and I reached out to the school system and I said, hey Carl, I'm just going to register this person for your clinic. And there, there are slots in the clinic that's, that's happening next, next week. There should be no reason that anybody in the public school system who wants to be vaccinated can't be vaccinated. So as we're rolling into one C and trying to get through this category, we're finding that a lot of people have already been vaccinated elsewhere. There, there have been an estimated eight thousand one hundred and sixteen people vaccinated. So about half of the people who are in the sixty-five to seventy-four year old category have been vaccinated. Chris Swann helped us out and sent out a blast email and we'll probably send a few more blast emails like this to all of the people who are on our interest list. And there are still slots in a couple of the clinics that I mentioned up there earlier on in a slide that we have available for people who are sixty-five to seventy-four to get vaccinated. So if you're, if you're not on our interest list, please get yourself on our interest list or call us and we'll, we'll get you on the interest list. And, you know, we, we've made, with the seventy-five plus, there was a lot of effort to call anybody who didn't have technology and get them signed up. We'll do the same thing for people who are sixty-five to seventy-four. If you don't have internet or you don't have email, we'll help get you signed up and call our call center and, and we'll get you signed up and get you vaccinated. So I, I think we're at a point now where, where things are very different than they were a month or two ago, where I was loudly complaining that we weren't getting enough vaccine to get through phase B, one B and one C. And, you know, it took us a lot longer to get through one B and one C. And it's been a, it's been a, a difficult process. But I think we're, we're there now where we've offered vaccination to essentially everybody in one B. And, and we've given an opportunity to people in one C that are sixty-five to seventy-four. And we're getting ready to move on to this essential workers, lab services, agricultural manufacturing, postal service, it would probably include lawyers and veterinarians based on the state's guidance and, and potentially the press, grocery store workers. Some of the things that it doesn't include right now is it doesn't include retail. It doesn't include food service, but it does include, our, our manufacturing is the big place we want to focus. Grocery stores, places that, that have been essential businesses from that perspective. The, the essential business list and, and the prioritized groups for vaccination are a little bit different from each other. We want to continue to make sure we're reaching the right population. But as we roll out our vaccine clinics, I, I think the state's likely, and I, and I can't scoop the governor because they won't give us any information on where they may be going. But I, I think that, you know, the president said that they want to get by May the first to the point where they're offering vaccination to everybody who's over the age of eighteen. And I think the state's going to get there and they may get there by May first or they may even get there earlier. But we'll have to see, you know, what the governor says at some point in time as far as where the state wants to go. So our plan is we're going to schedule our clinics and we're going to, we're going to continue to focus on people who are in these high priority groups. And we're going to try to register them first. And then we're going to more broadly share our, our links with, with people that are in these essential worker categories and other things. And we do ask that, you know, people be honest and that, that they, we're, we're actually going to be checking. If, if you're an essential worker, we're going to want to either a, an employee identification, a pay stub or a, a letter from the employer showing how you fit into one of these priority categories when you show up at our clinics. Because right now, as, as long as we're trying to hit the priority categories, we want to make sure we're getting the right people. We, we may at some point in time open this up more broadly and open it up to everybody. But right now we're, we're still at a phase where we're trying to hit the priority categories. And the other piece that's a little bit kind of unusual is the, the hospitals, and, and it's not Life Bridge or Carroll Hospital Center that we're having this issue with. But I'm finding that some people who are receiving hospital-based treatments, somehow the hospitals have not prioritized them for vaccination. So we're also probably going to open up vaccination to people who have a doctor's note that says they're receiving these hospital-based treatments for specific categories of, of illness such as cancer, a hospital-based treatment for, for renal dialysis and, and for the, and, and for certain types of diabetes and things like that. The, the other thing is though, is it doesn't make sense to me that we're only doing this for hospital-based treatment because we have a, a renal dialysis organization out here that's not necessarily affiliated with the hospital. And, and, and I don't understand how patients who are receiving dialysis in a hospital center versus people, people who are receiving dialysis in a dialysis center that's not affiliated with a hospital or are real, really at risk any differently. So we're, we're likely to move forward with also accepting doctors' notes from, from physicians that say that their patients are receiving treatment in, in an outpatient setting for these underlying health conditions and prioritize them as well. Again, I think the way we're going to do this is we're going to initially start with these priority groups. And if, if things open up wider and the vaccine's widely available and we're starting, and we start vaccinating people in phase two and phase three, we're going to hit those priority people first and then we'll open up our clinics to registration to, to, to the people in the community who are otherwise the, the vaccines available to. So that's, that's kind of our plan moving forward. This has not been easy. It's been, it's been a, a difficult thing as, as some people have been unhappy that they've had to wait. I, I'm, I'm hearing from a lot of people who are under the age of sixty-five that have underlying health conditions that, and I, I do agree with them that they're at, at a higher risk and we, we want to start reaching them as well. So I think we're, we've done a really good job of trying to, of, of reaching all of our people in one B. And now that we're, we're moving on to one C, we're finding that a lot of these people have already been vaccinated and, and we're, we're going to be able to offer it to anybody who's in one C that, that still needs to be vaccinated. This chart is just our, our demographic chart as far as, as race and that type of thing. We, we, we've done a really good job. If you look at this chart with the African-American population, they're actually just a, a few percentage points higher in the, in the total sixty-five plus age group than, than the Caucasian population in Carroll County. And I'm not sure there's any other jurisdiction in the state of Maryland that can, in the state of Maryland or in the country, that can say they've reached more of their African-American population than, than, than their, than their Caucasian population. But I, I guess I'd like to thank our staff for doing a good job in, in reaching out to these groups. We do have a very small population to reach here in Carroll County, but it is good that that's, that's been fairly equitable. We're having a, not an easy time reaching the Hispanic population, but that's, that's the one population that I'm most concerned about. We've been talking to some organizations and trying to figure out how we can get their percentages up as well. But I think we're, we're, we're doing a pretty good job from not only getting it out to all areas of the county so that people can be vaccinated even in the, in the, in the farther reaches of, of the county, up in Tawny Town, Mount Airy, all, all over the place in, in Carroll County, but also reaching the, the, the people that, who are in these minority groups. That's essentially it for me. I, I probably missed some things that I wanted to say, but thank you commissioners for all your support. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you guys have. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing and hopefully I won't kick myself out of the meeting like I've done from time to time. There we go.
Thank you for all you're doing. Any questions, comments from the group?
Just nice tie, Ed.
So you know, but you know, there was a commissioner who gave that to me and happens to be from the Mount Airy area. So thanks.
Any, any comments? Again, appreciate all the work you're doing, partnership. And we're just going to get, you know, get through this. So, okay, let's move on.
Have a great day. Have a great day.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Lex, uh yeah, great. Mike Fowler? Uh, not yet. Mike Fowler, you are up with legislative update.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you. We uh, I just took a look back at this time last year and we had about three thousand bills in in play last year. So you can see we're significantly down about twenty-three fifty roughly. Uh Monday is a big day, probably the biggest day of the session with the exception of signee die and and maybe the budget, uh the budget date, the bill, the budget bill has to be submitted. So after that, we'll we'll be in position to know what is left to be concerned about and uh and what has been left behind. Uh yesterday on the House floor, the budget bill and the Burfa bills were both introduced by the Chair of Appropriations, uh Maggie McIntosh. And she indicated that the revenue estimates have been raised and then the the funds coming from the American Rescue Plan Act, the federal funds are leading to a better fiscal outlook and that the deficit will be erased for this year and next year. Uh so there were a lot of smiles around uh around town yesterday. Both the budget bill and the Burfa bill are on the floor for final passage today in the House. The uh the Burfa bill, we talked about some of the hits that were in there. Uh they have been amended out and that was the fifty percent of erroneous conviction settlements would be shared by the county. And then the seems like in the annual effort to shift the ESTAT costs to the county have been both amended out. So so that's a good thing. Uh the COVID workman's compensation bills uh have still have not moved. Uh the the hearings were pretty interesting. Sounded like the the chair and the Senate at least um had was was a bit skeptical. I don't want to suggest that any of these bills won't move, uh but some concerns about particularly some of them were were uh reaching back in in time. So we'll we'll see, but they haven't moved yet. Uh they've got to move by Tuesday, by Monday. If they're gonna move it also, we'll keep a an eye on those. The other workman's comp bill was the uh medical cannabis bill and that was given an unfavorable committee. So that's out of play. Uh we talked about House Bill ten seventy-nine, the uh exemption for activities uh that promote health and physical well-being would be exempt from the admissions and amusement tax. Uh that has not moved as well, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. Particularly with, it seems like there are some recreational facilities that may be coming to the county, so we'll keep an eye on that. Uh the House Bill seventy-three and Senate Bill seven-ten were, that was the teleworking bill. It's in its initial form. It would have been uh prescriptive on teleworking plans and reporting. Uh it's been significantly amended and only requires you to uh well, actually authorizes you to create a plan and to implement it to the extent practical. Uh and there's no reporting required. There was an annual report required in the initial bill. So that did pass the House. Uh Senate version has not moved out yet, so we'll be following that. And then the Maryland Essential Workers Protection Act, you remember that was a bill that uh that had a very large defined list of essential workers and prescribed a a very lengthy uh list of of uh protections to them that is still in the committees. In the House, it was uh submitted by the Chair of the Committee, so it it does have some power there. Uh but it sounds like it's getting probably significantly amended. There were indications in the initial hearings in both uh chambers that, or both committees uh that it it needed a lot of work. So uh hopefully, we'll we'll see if that comes out. If it comes out, hopefully it's in a significantly amended form. Uh House Bill one oh three and Senate Bill ninety uh were bills that would kind of define local involvement in the CPCN process. You know, this, again, this goes back to a uh court uh decision that sort of limited your ability to have to influence CPCNs or or certificates of public uh necessity and convenience, which are when a a generating facility is is proposed and constructed. Uh both those bills have been withdrawn by the sponsor, so I think that that's good. Still keeps you in the game, a little, maybe a little more widely than would have been prescribed by those bills. Another interesting bill is uh is the preservation of agricultural land. There's a goal now to preserve uh one million thirty thousand acres of agricultural land across the state through a combination of existing state and local programs. And those bills have both passed uh their respective chambers. The blueprint for Maryland's future, so the Kerwin bill from last year, as you know, was vetoed and then overridden. So there was a bill that was introduced to try to address some sort of a cleanup, if you will, to adjust uh some of the the requirements in terms of their timing. And the big issue that was initially in the Burfa bill was the one we've talked about a number of times where there's a one-time hold harmless grant from the state because of your reduced enrollment. But then there was a concern that that would reset the floor for MOE and that would rise significantly in in out years. Uh it was amended out of the uh Burfa. So it's addressed in the new Kerwin, the Kerwin revision bill. And that will, that will definitely move and move quickly, I assume. Uh another bill, I think we mentioned this briefly uh last week, was the uh collective bargaining for community colleges. So that's that's under, um it's in the amending process right now. And what they've done is sort of split the impacted colleges in in half. So the larger colleges uh need to go in into this uh into this new regime in September of twenty-two. And then the smaller colleges, of which Carroll is one, uh will be required to enter in September first twenty-twenty-three. So wh- what this does is authorizes collective bargaining at the colleges. It does not require it. Um I I got my friends at Mako to pass along to me what they know about it to date. So these are conceptual amendments. Uh I think that I've seen on the Senate floor, uh Senator Hoff uh putting in some amendments about the 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 uh the the bargaining units. So let let me just go through those. It it delays bargaining on wages for the smaller colleges to July first twenty-twenty-four. So that was one of the amendments. Um also, there's some unconfined language that they they want to put in, which it is. It is the intent of the General Assembly that the lay and implementation of legislation shall be to ensure that community colleges are granted sufficient time to plan for potential negotiations. It shall not be used to plan for or engage in activities that would discourage or otherwise coerce employees seeking to hold an election. So I think that was a a uh a consent uh consent on on behalf of the Democrats that, yeah, we'll give you a little bit more time, but we don't want you out there working against uh organizing. Um also, the original bill had six bargaining units. That's been negotiated down to four. Uh eliminates one unit reserved for eligible non-exempt employees and one unit reserved for sworn police officers. So it's basically uh uh faculty now uh in in the bill. Uh so that's kind of where it stands right now. Again, it's in flux. Uh there's both a House and a Senate version, so I'll be keeping up on the on on how this uh moves and I'll I'll keep you in the loop on that. Election bills, we we've talked off and on about some of these. Um I had a little back and forth with uh Catherine Berry at the Board of Elections, so I thought I would bring all of these as as one group to you and give you an update on these. Uh so the first, House Bill two oh six and Senate Bill five ninety-six deal with early voting centers. So it it sort of makes uh consistent the the times and number of days that early voting centers need to be opened. So right now, in a in a general election, presidential election, uh the opening was eight to seven and for primaries, it would be ten to seven. Well, now it's it's uh seven AM instead of eight AM or ten AM, it's seven AM. And uh both bills have passed and they've both gone to the opposite chambers. So a second bill, House Bill seven forty-five, dealing with early voting centers, dealt with the number. And and this was in last year as well, you probably remember. Um it increases the thresholds for opening an early voting center. So for Carroll, you fall in that group, at least a hundred thousand, but fewer than two hundred thousand registered voters. So that would be three centers. There's an option for an additional center if both the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Elections agree to open a uh an additional one. Uh this has passed the Senate. I suspect it will probably go through the House as well. A House Bill seven fifty-nine is something called post-election tabulation audits. Um frankly, thi- this is kind of complex. Uh math is not my strong point. So it it prescribes a particular type of audit. Uh it is, has been amended though to a work group to study the issue and to recommend legislation for next year's session. Um I do know it can be costly, so that's some of the things that the work group will be uh working on. So that that has passed the House in its amended form. Uh House Bill ten forty-seven is the Mail and Voting Enhancement Act. It's gonna require more drop boxes, some technology enhancements for voter notification. Has a provision in there regarding security cameras for the drop boxes. Uh no movement on that yet. We'll see how that one goes. House Bill ten forty-eight and Senate Bill six eighty-three, the permanent absentee ballot list. I mentioned this one to you last week, that voters can request to receive an absentee ballot and then remain on the list for ensuing elections. Uh there are steps included to refine the list periodically. Um it's gonna require some additional communications to voters, text and email, for example. Uh did the, did pass the House with some amendments. And Senate Bill eight thirty-one is a a very large bill, Election Reform Act of twenty-twenty-one. Uh require live streaming of the Board of Election uh meetings, additional ballot marking devices in each uh precinct, extends early voting by ten days. So it's a very large and a very expensive bill. Uh might collapse under its own weight. No movement on that yet, but we'll we'll be watching all of these because, as you know, election bills will have an impact on the county. Uh public safety, the SRO bills, I have it on on good word that the House Chair will not be moving the SRO bills. Um I mentioned in in the outline, this House Judiciary, it's actually ways and means. So I I think we can call those dead. Uh all nine bills from the Senate Police Package, it went into detail last time about how those packages in each house are constructed. So the bills in the Senate package have been scheduled for hearings in the House Committee uh next week, on the twenty-fifth. Uh House Bill six seventy, which is the Speaker's bill, which is the omnibus bill, uh has not been scheduled for a hearing at this time in in JPR. And as you know, we've got to have a conference to get together and iron these things out, and they are very differently. Uh the most obvious is of which is there are nine bills compared to one bill. So a lot of work for them to do. One good note on the local health department funding bills that were a Mako initiative. Um it has passed the Senate, still in the House Committee, but going through the Senate is a is a very positive step for us. So jumping over to public works, another good uh, a good sign for us is the highway user revenues, which was another uh, actually was a uh MML and Mako initiative. Uh it removes the twenty-twenty-five sunset. So you remember a couple of years ago, the highway user revenues were increased and uh the municipalities get a larger cut of that, but nonetheless, one big concern was the sunset. We would fall back to where we were. So that's been eliminated in the Senate bill uh passed through the Senate. It is still in House Committee, but I think it was a good sign. We got it through the Senate. Uh a bill we talked about in the past uh was on the floor yesterday and it's House Bill two sixty-four, the Organics Recycling and Waste Diversion. So thi- this was uh the subject of a lot of debate. Uh some amendments were proposed and rejected, others accepted. Essentially, this would require uh a a person is the way it's described in the bill. And I think you all know how how persons are described in in legislation, but it would be an entity that generates, initially generates two tons of food waste per week. That's effective on January first twenty-three. And then that falls to one ton per week, effective in twenty-four. Uh you may ask, how do we measure a ton? Um or how do we know if if a an entity is generating that? Uh that's probably gonna have to come through the regulations because it's not defined in the bill. Uh a requirement is the generator of the waste must be within thirty miles of a facility that's both willing and able to take it. Uh I talked with Cliff Engel and no such facility exists now. There's one planned for either Howard or Montgomery, but they won't be accepting outside. So for now, uh anyone in Carroll is not gonna fall under the requirements of this bill. Um on the floor, it was suggested that restaurants and schools were amended out. Uh the amended version that I see still has schools in there as an individual school, but collectively in the aggregate, a school system would not qualify for this. Um there's some questions about the college, so yes, they would fall under that if they have a cafeteria, for example, that generates that amount of waste. So I think that for the the foreseeable future, this is not a concern for us, but over time, it's something that may be an issue. And we talked about House Bill ten ninety-four and Senate Bill six fifty. That was the Baltimore County proposal to form a work group to evaluate uh regional waste disposal facility. Uh that has not moved in either committee. Uh several senators, including uh Katie Fry Hester, our Carolyn Howard Senator, um expressed concern about counties not being consulted in advance on this. Uh also Senator Galian from Hartford was expressed concerns about that. So it sounds to me like there there's enough concern there that the bill may not move. Um don't quote me on that though, but obviously we're keeping a close eye on it. And uh I know last week we talked about the Plastic Bag Reduction Act and Commissioner Wenz asked about phasing in. Um it's not really phasing in, it's effective July first twenty-twenty-two. And and so that's, if you want to call that phasing, that's it. It did pass the House and uh moves on to the to the Senate now. Uh coming up on the end here, under um technology, we have House Bill thirty-eight, Senate Bill forty-nine, uh cybersecurity bill. Uh this would develop guidance on cybersecurity strategies for counties, municipalities and school systems. Uh there's specific language in there that states it's not a mandate, nothing in there is a mandate. Uh the Senate version, if has passed, there's no movement on our House version. Really, the intent is to is to just keep this uh this issue uh in a coordinated fashion. Uh same with House Bill eight seventy-nine and Senate Bill sixty-nine, uh cyber security coordination and operations office. So it puts a a an office of coordination in in MEMA, establishes regional coordinators and it's intended to bring obviously more coordination to planning and best practices. Uh so just some some parting thoughts, President Ferguson. Uh, President Ferguson, for a second time, has reminded the body, uh, of their workload and their time constraints and that some bills are not going to pass. Uh, the House floor debates have been lengthy, a lot of, uh, a lot of discussion, a lot of amendments proposed. If they're proposed by Republicans, they're generally rejected. Um, and a lot of these controversial bills, as expected, are going through on party line votes. Uh, the committee chairs are starting to get a little testy for people that are testifying and going over their time limits. So they're, they're cutting them off, uh, not necessarily politely in all cases. Um, but the, the big thing we have to look forward to is a crossover on Monday and we'll obviously have a much better picture of what, what has made it through and what we need to focus on, uh, going forward. So that's what I have for you today.
Mike, thank you so much again. A lot of information in a relatively short amount of time, uh, for us to all digest. Any thoughts, questions, comments?
Thanks for keeping us up there, Mike.
Hey, Mike, the plastic bag bill, that passed the House. I- is it in the Senate? Did it cross over?
Yes, well, it's in the committee, in the Senate Committee.
Okay. I find that very in- interesting that we're, we're, we're focused on plastic bags in the middle of a pandemic. Because a lot of people are using them and utilizing them in best practices, and yet we want to eliminate them. Hmm. Just let that sink in for a minute. Keep us informed on that, thanks.
Yeah, sure, yeah, challenges with, uh, with paper bags too.
Yeah, I'd say.
Is a challenge and they're more expensive, so it's going to be, going to be interesting going forward.
So I have those cloth bags, you can take them and wash them.
Yeah, like that's going to happen.
That's what I do.
You're one of about fifty, that's it. One out of fifty. That it, any other bags other than plastic during a pandemic are incredibly unsafe. And I can't believe they're even talking about it down there.
Other, uh, comments? Mike, uh, appreciate you sharing, uh, Senator Fry Hester's, uh, concern about counties not being consulted. She actually reached out to me, uh, about SB six fifty, um, along, uh, with Senator Reedy. Um, so continuing that dialogue is very important, uh, to ensure that we do get consulted on issues like this. The other, uh, and it seems like I'm going to be giving her a couple of shout outs, Senator Hester. She is fully involved with the cyber and cybersecurity. Um, and she has, uh, reached out to a few of the nonprofits. One of them, the, uh, what's called Kami, which is, uh, cyber, it's basically cybersecurity, uh, business consortium, uh, nonprofit that she's, uh, doing a lot of work with, so, uh, that's great. And then the third is, uh, she's trying, I know, to put together a council dealing with the, uh, food situation across the state. I spoke, uh, at her town hall on Monday regarding that and how we stood up our pop-up pantries and, uh, our co-ed, um, you know, an organization against disasters here in Carroll County, uh, partnering with our EMS. Um, so very much involved with community activities. Okay, anything else? You're none, let's move on. Uh, once again, thanks again, Mike.
Thank you.
Now, where's Bob? Mr. McCoy, let's talk Fire EMS.
Morning Commissioners, uh, appreciate your time as always, hope everybody's doing well. Uh, let me see, I'm going to share my screen, Chris, if I can have that option. Thank you, Chris. All right, I usually, um, usually start off, um, skipping the first few, um, slides. I don't know why it's not letting me start the presentation. I apologize. It's like it's locked up.
Nah. Don't know.
Yeah. Can everybody see that okay though, until this starts? Okay. I don't want to slow your day down.
Nope, it's all good.
I appreciate, uh, your time. Let me get out of here.
There we go.
There we go. Sorry, I'm having a long drag on this computer. All right, so as I said before, we usually skim over the first couple of slides, uh, but for the purpose of the new, uh, citizens that may be watching, and I think over time, it's, it's important to repeat this. Uh, want to just go real quickly, why is the county doing it? And we, we addressed three primary questions. Why are we doing a combination Fire EMS Department? What is the ultimate goal and what is the county doing to accomplish the goal? So the why, uh, we want to ensure efficient public safety, fire and EMS to the citizens and visitors of the county. Uh, it was requested of the county, uh, to commence a Fire EMS Department, uh, through a request of the independent stations through CC Visa. It supplements and complements the existing volunteer personnel with resources. It creates a framework for future Fire EMS, uh, department development and it will eventually improve response times. Carroll County is primarily, um, a home response, uh, fire department, um, from a lot of places and we will eventually through staffing be able to increase those times to have immediate response. What is the ultimate goal? Uh, one of the biggest goals I've heard and, uh, the issues I've heard from every volunteer station was to transfer the burden of employment responsibilities from the volunteer corporations to the county. They can no longer afford this. They're utilizing their twenty-four-seven EVOD money that we contribute. They are also utilizing their EMS revenue and many, most stations are dipping into their fundraising now to make payroll. And it will transition current career station per, uh, positions to county career positions based on your approved hiring schedule. So what has the county been doing? Uh, of course, we've had that, that meeting that we discussed multiple times, November twelfth. Uh, we discussed four objects or four milestone goals, MOU budget, hiring and public safety training. So today we're going to discuss a subject under hiring that I've, I've received many questions and comments, uh, about over the last, uh, several months. So today's the objective is for the board to decide between single certified employees or dual certified employees, uh, as we go through our hiring practice. So just a little bit of information, a single certified employee, uh, is someone that's dis- uh, certified in only one discipline. They may be firefighter certified only, or they may be EMS certified only, but cannot do both. These are one-dimensional employees, they're not trained or certified to handle any emergency. That firing EMS apparatus may be dispatched to, they, they can only handle up to their training level. A dual certified employee, it's an employee of the Fire EMS Department certified in two disciplines. Could be firefighter EMT, could be firefighter paramedic certified, and of course that grows with promotions. You could be a lieutenant, fire lieutenant slash paramedic and, and so on and so forth. These personnel, when they're assigned to a station, they provide EMS service primarily in the course of the day, uh, from an ambulance. But they are available and trained to assist on any incident we may be dispatched to if needed as a county. I am a firm believer, we deal with the call we have versus the call that may not come. Most ambulances in Carroll County, we carry self-contained breathing apparatus on those vehicles. Uh, many stations now, if their EMS is available on a fire call and we need personnel, they are capable of putting on their SCBA and going to work. We also run fire and EMS units on incidents which require members to work in an atmosphere that is immediately dangerous to life and health, uh, with smoke exposures and hazardous materials. Dual certified.
Uh, real, I apologize, but you said that they carry their SCBA on the ambulances?
Yes, SCBA on all the fire trucks and most ambulances carry SCBA on the ambulances as well for the firefighters on those units to be able to participate.
So you're saying most, but not all, um, ambulances carry SCBA?
The ambulance that, ambulances that I have encountered, yes, they have SCBA. I can't, I can't sit here and say I can confirm all of them.
Okay, thanks.
Well, like I said, we also run calls where they're exposed to smoke, they're exposed to hazardous materials calls. A dual certified employee are capable of protecting themselves, but also operating in those atmospheres to assist for periods where joint career or employee and volunteer staffing is available. So I'm going to use Westminster as an example. I've kind, I've said numerous times throughout this, our goal, my goal initially was to mirror the service that is being provided um, to the stations, uh, now as we transition. So on the left, you have stationed employees per shift. Each day they start, Westminster starts with six personnel and Westminster is different than most as that's the largest, uh, crew. But it starts with an officer and an EVOD, which is a vehicle driver operator. But it also starts with two firefighter paramedics and two firefighter EMTs to staff, uh, the two ambulances at that station. On the right, when we, uh, hire the personnel that you approve for Westminster, we will provide the exact same scenario. We will have two firefighter paramedics, two firefighter EMTs, an officer and a, and a driver. The nice, uh, example of, of this type of dual certification is that we are able to rotate these employees to get breaks off of the units. So the driver is off, a firefighter EMT or firefighter paramedic could actually get a shift off the ambulance and move over to the fire truck and, and just be able to, uh, keep their skills up on all activities. It's actually interesting that yesterday, as I was, uh, putting this together, Westminster Fire Company sent out an advertisement, they have one vacancy now and they sent out an advertisement where the employee, uh, applicant must be cross-trained Fire and EMS and have just as many fire certifications as EMS. So I've included a risk matrix, um, risk reward matrix to highlight, uh, each employee option. Uh, I can tell you as Deputy Chief of Operations in Prince George's County, we went through this issue in the late nineties in, in a very reactive manner. Uh, we were dealing with, uh, continuous complaints from EMS-only members. We were dealing with increased cost, EMS burnout, increased leave usage, injuries and just general job dissatisfaction from our EMS workforce. Uh, we spent countless staff hours and a large amount of taxpayer funds to dual certify these EMS-only employees over the next decade. Um, I, I do want to be very clear, as I've spoken to many of the potential applicants. This does not, I, I have, I in no way want to imply that we're not going to hire any EMS-only people. I do not want to short, uh, shorten the pool of potential paramedics that we have out there. And if we do hire EMS-only, uh, paramedics, that we would provide a pathway for cross-training. But I have to say, my, my recommendation is based on firsthand senior level management experience in a county Fire and EMS department. It's proactive and it will save the county many staff hours and expense once these employees are on payroll and they want to increase their certifications and have opportunities.
Bob, is it easier to, uh, cross-train from Fire to EMS or EMS to Fire?
Say that again, sir, I didn't hear you.
The, uh, the cost benefit, is it easier to cross-train going from Fire to EMS or EMS to Fire?
It's easier to cross-train from EMS to Fire. But there's still an expense, there's still time once they're on staff. But the hours are, are a little, uh, are more decreased, but I'm going to go over the other side of the expense portion. Uh, just to continue with this, an additional certification of an employee does not prevent us from dress, from addressing the EMS needs. We will be providing bodies to address those needs, but we'll have more use of those employees and it will also provide numerous opportunities and satisfaction for our employees. Um, I, I continue to receive numerous comments and recommendations and I, believe me, I, I, I try to evaluate all of them. I've had people that continue to recommend chase vehicles. Chase vehicles are a short-term solution, um, but they have their, uh, downsides also. Uh, requires three people to run a call that normally requires two. Then that, then that paramedic has to be taken back to their vehicle, so it extends out-of-service time. Uh, and also, as we discussed previously, it does not resolve the issue that EMS revenue needs to follow the employees. If we put a paramedic on a volunteer ambulance, that billing goes to that ambulance company, not the, not the county as far as that paramedic. So there are many different areas that we're looking at. We are looking at all the options to continue our long-term development while addressing the immediate needs of EMS in the field, we understand that. But I have to work within the amount of positions that you approve, uh, to achieve our goals, to transfer that burden of employment from the stations to the county. And once again, as we acquire assets, right now, we, we have no employees, no EMS equipment and no vehicles. As we acquire those assets, the equipment and the people, I can put additional units in service in areas that have immediate service issues such as no paramedics in the area. So we'll be able to, to, uh, continue to build on that to, uh, address a lot of these short-term needs.
Another question for you.
Yes, sir.
You have, address immediate need up top as a reward for both. Are you referring to address immediate need of EMS? Is that the next word or what?
It addresses the immediate need of the employees, whether it's a fire or EMS. I mean, when you, when you single certify, everyone can apply.
Okay.
And, and like I said, I don't want to discourage EMS-only people from applying. So that I want to be very clear on that, but both address our needs of having a large applicant pool.
Okay.
Uh, Bob, looking long range, what does the school system train, uh, person going through the, uh, tech center? How do they come out certified?
At, at the Carroll Community College?
Yes.
To my knowledge, they come out certified paramedics.
Okay.
Their coursework.
Okay, just one, uh, so then they would have to go in and, uh, cross-train.
To my knowledge, yes. And a lot of people that advanced, that, you know, a lot of people may already have their fire certification and it is, uh, less hours to achieve that, so.
Uh, Commissioner Weaver, were you talking about the EST program?
Uh, yes, both.
Oh, okay. The, the EST program, they come out as EMTs, not paramedics.
Right.
If you want to, if you want to acquire your paramedic, you take additional training at the community college level and then you acquire your paramedic. So, um, I, I got some other comments, I'll let you, I'll let you finish here, Bob, I don't want to.
Absolutely.
In the interest of time, I'll let you finish.
Okay, part of the other expense issue, and I addressed this, um, we went through this in, in my time in Prince George's County. Because of the two oh seven K exemption of the Fair Labor Standards Act, across a dual certified firefighter can work up to two hundred and twelve hours in a twenty-eight day pay period, which is basically fifty-three hours per work week prior to overtime being, uh, required. Non-firefighters must be paid overtime for any hours worked over forty hours. So then you start getting into conflicting weights, um, uh, time schedules, uh, when you have single source or, or single certified versus dual certified. Um, we ended up having to convert our twenty-four seventy-two shift in, in Prince George's to one side for Fire and the, and then the other side, uh, for EMS only was a twenty-four sixteen schedule with mandatory overtime during the weekend. And it became a, a large expense because you're looking at thirteen-hour difference there. As far as a, a, a cushion before you have to provide that overtime. So in summary, as Director of Fire EMS, I do recommend that we concentrate on hiring dual certified employees. Um, I just want to confirm again, I'm not saying that single certified cannot apply. Uh, I'm not saying that, uh, we will not hire, um, somebody that's single certified because I have to really be concerned with the applicant pool of paramedics in general. Uh, we just had a long discussion last week or last night with ESAC. There is a national, regional, local shortage of paramedics. We're going to experience the exact same issue. One situation that I'm in is, I've said it last night, if I was building this department from ground up with new buildings, I don't know that I would have put a paramedic unit in every station. NFPA response require, or. NFPA response require or um guidelines is to have a uh a B L S ambulance on the scene within four minutes and an A L S unit on the scene within eight minutes. Um so maybe we could have more of a regional paramedic approach. So we may be in a position down the road that if our applicant pool is is declined, that I then take maybe three units uh three stations and cover that whole three-station area with one paramedic unit in the middle. These are all options we'll review uh as we also go through the application process and determine how many employees there are. But once again, I'm not closing the door to to single certified employees. We do want to provide a pathway to their dual certification. But I'm I'm telling you, based on my experience, I've gone through this, this is proactive. We should focus on dual certification whenever possible from the beginning. Um I I just don't, um I cannot see any reason not to take someone with uh more certifications if they are available for the county. So I will take uh any questions that you have.
Okay, questions, comments?
Director McCoy, I want to thank you for being in this position and have the knowledge to put together that that the importance of the dual certification. So I appreciate the time you put into this. I have heard a lot from the people in my district as well as my colleagues on this issue. So I appreciate your leadership and putting in front of the public so the public has a better understanding as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other thoughts? Um I think uh the intent is to give you more direction in uh moving forward on a path, whether it's going to be, you know, the, which course of action? Uh is that what your, is that what your intent is in briefing us today?
Yes, sir, I ju- I just want clarification that you understand that dual certification is an option that I don't think we should uh ignore.
Okay, that that's fair. Um yeah, you know, I wasn't at the ESAC, I know, I imagine Commissioner Wance, you were also at the ESAC. Um and you have obvious resident knowledge on this. Um and I don't know what they did in Baltimore County, I don't know if that's a model we should even look at because it's Baltimore County compared to here. Uh are there other models that are like where we're going in Carroll County on what the, they did as a path forward uh in going after either EMS only or cross-trained individuals? Um and what's successful, what's not, I mean, Commissioner Wance?
I thought you were asking Bob, he knows, he knows the answer to this too. Uh it that, you know, the counties are all over the maps with these. Uh where I came from, they were having a difficult time, as Bob said. He put it very, uh very, he's, he said it very well. Uh you you've, it it is increasingly more difficult to find people that want to ride on ambulances. Uh everybody wants to ride the fire engine because it's, it's exciting. Uh you know, you you can move people out of the way as you're moving down the road and and you can really, your adrenaline goes up and yee-haw. Uh but ambulances are are a problem. And uh as a result of that, Baltimore County started hiring just emergency medical classes uh of people because you you can't, you you just can't get them. And then that in turn, uh I believe, helps you set up a little bit different pay structure, if you will. So if you've got somebody that wants to be a paramedic, uh you can start out paying them more money and that attracts more people into that position. I'm glad to hear, I'm I'm in full agreement with with Director McCoy uh on the fact that we should certainly emphasize the fact that we want folks dual trained. And I think in most cases, you'll find that about eighty percent of the people you're going to hire are going to be dual trained anyway. And that might be higher. Um but I also want to get back to a very important bullet point that he has on his presentation. The reason, one of the primary reasons we're doing this is to transfer the burden of employment away from our volunteer stations. And ninety-five and maybe a little bit higher percent of the people that are hired in our stations are emergency medical people, period. That's where the burden is, that's where it started, that's where we are today. Uh I I don't mind using Westminster as a model. I have some reservations about that, there are many stations in this county uh that have a plethora of people that want to ride the fire engines. And they're recruiting and doing very well of getting folks that want to take fire training. Folks that don't want any part of riding an ambulance, and you can imagine why. I mean, we're in, the pandemic's not helping either uh for sure. Uh but you know, uh for some reason, and I'm not going to get into the politics of of this, but for some reason Westminster's always had a tough time of recruiting volunteers and maintaining volunteers. I know of many people that have joined there only to leave uh later on. And I don't know what it, I don't know why, I don't, I I don't know if it's because of the surrounding community because there's not a lot of folks that live, you know, in the Westminster area that could get to the fire station in a reasonable period of time or whatever. But uh as a result of that, for whatever reason, they started hiring firefighters because they didn't have enough people to ride them. So my point here is this, um I don't want uh a a list of people that are cross-trained over here and a list of people that are, that are trained only in EMS over here. And this one gets more uh attention than this list. I think we've got to hire the first people that come on board that that want to be uh a an employee of Carroll County, regardless of what their training is. And that's, that's my point, and you, Director McCoy, you you mentioned that, that you're not going to turn away folks that that just want to be EMS. And trust me, there are people out there, I worked with many people in a neighboring jurisdiction that wanted no parts of riding a fire engine. Their love, their life, their energy is on an ambulance. It's getting tougher to find those folks, but they are out there. And if you set the pay structure right, then you are transferring the burden of employment uh as the bullet point says, so I don't want to limit it. And I don't want to also make it a point of hiring somebody that's a paramedic and tell them, hey, by the way, you're going to have to be a firefighter in eight months. I think that's unacceptable. If we find somebody that wants to be a paramedic, then by gosh, they ought to, they be able to work their career here in Carroll as a paramedic without, and giving them the option and not making them cross-train if they don't want to cross-train. So I think that's very important as well. Um so and and uh I I just, I'm not against the chase car either. I know Director McCoy and I differ on that, that's what makes the world go around. Uh but if, you know, if we're going to load three and twelve uh with people out of the gate, which I'm not totally against, or does that mean that the outer line stations are going to have to wait another year or two as we continue to try to hire people? Because the need is just as great in in Harney or, well, not necessarily Harney, but Tony Town or 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 Hampstead, the Route Thirty corridor, as it is in Westminster and Sykesville. So to it, to alleviate that that issue, I'm not against putting a chase car or a paramedic in a car. Uh I think it's something we should look at as we continue to to look at the hiring process here. Um because then you can, you can put a paramedic in a, in a S U V on the Route Thirty corridor to help over there if if needed. You can float those people a lot more easier than you can an ambulance, so I'd like to continue to look at that. I I also, maybe I missed it, but we keep talking about, you know, we've approved forty-four positions. Did we actually approve forty-four or did we say that that's the way we want to go um based on the the uh options we were given? Because I keep hearing this forty-four figure. We haven't done the budget yet, so I, you know, I I'm not sure where we are with that either. So um that's just some of my thoughts. Uh I just, I I don't want to get locked into uh making, making the pool of people that are available, and listen, this is going to be tough anyway because let's, let's be realistic about this. Um if you go to Baltimore County or Howard County or Montgomery County or Frederick County, you have the possibility, because we haven't seen a pay scale yet, of making more money there uh in those counties in a career in the fire service. So we're going to have to be very, very careful here uh because we we're, we're going to have a limited amount of people to choose from anyway. So don't limit it to making people have to cross-train if they don't want to.
Yeah, go please.
Yeah, I I was gonna say, I I believe that we should hire the dual-trained personnel as often as possible. If they're trained in fire and EMS, they they can do both. I think it helps out the station, the station can decide what they're going to do. Now, that being said, if if there's a shortage of those individuals, then you look to hire one or the other. But I think our first priority should be to hire dual-trained individual, have, put them in the fire stations, have the fire stations decide how they're going to be used and when they're going to be used. I think that just is uh a a better option, and if you look at the chart that Bob put out there, it addresses our long-term needs much better than just hiring someone that's single, single-trained in one's, one discipline or the other. And if you're going to hire, and I also think that the expectation should be that if we're hiring a firefighter or an EMS, that we let them know that, you know, we're hiring this way, but our expectation is that you get cross-trained. That's the expectation here in Carroll County. If you want, if if you want a career here, that's what we're looking for. I think that that's the way to go, and as far as pay scales so forth, I mean, look at the pay scale for the Sheriff's Department, look at pay scale for the teachers, look at, we pay less than the other surrounding counties and yeah, we could use some more people in those departments, but we're doing okay. I think the atmosphere and living in Carroll County and so forth kind of, I think, is the extra step that 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 people are willing to take for somewhat le- less pay, not dramatically less pay, but somewhat less pay. So those are my thoughts, but I think the dual-trained individual is one that we're, we should be shooting for. I think it will, in the long run, will benefit the fire, fire and EMS department much better.
I uh actually did a little research on some things, uh most counties require dual cert uh or cross-training. Uh and these, I think, as they come on board, uh I know Montgomery, Howard, all of them around us have. I I asked some people uh there, Baltimore County is the exception, I think, on that. Um small county, I mean, when we look at these other counties. And uh what I'm thinking is, you know, we hire a person or two, you know, they're more valuable to us if they are cross-trained and can, you know, um I'm sure, you know, the ambulance goes out, I think Bob, you mentioned it, you know, here, get out here and you don't need the ambulance, but you need firefighters on the site, uh you know, put your gear on and fight the fire or whatever. So you you're really, um and you know, we don't have a lot of certain times of the day, a lot of volunteers to cover things, maybe, you know, it gives us a little flexibility in there and uh I I kind of like the idea of being able to cross-train, even though we may not be able to hire them all right from the get-go. But I think the op, given the opportunity, it would be nice to have the uh um flexibility anyway.
Okay. Um I I guess what you shared was, um and I'm agreeing with uh all, what you shared was really the tasks at hand. You know, a means to the end, and the end is, you know, the purpose, and and that is to fill uh the vacancies, fill the needs. Um so if you believe that that is the best approach in filling the requirements, then it makes perfect sense for short, short term, for longer term, uh well, even short term. Uh is there thoughts of putting an incentive pay into this to allow for cross-training? Um you know, or to allow for longevity? Uh I don't know if that's something to look at. Um I think we're all in agreeance that, you know, the cross-training seems to be the best model without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. If somebody is EMS alone or fire alone, that you still need to look at their abilities. Um and if there is a need uh for them to fill, then, you know, don't, don't disregard them. Uh you know, let's, let's work with with that individual to fill the firehouses that, I mean, that that's the, at the end of the day. Like Commissioner Frazier shared, I think the priority is cross-train. But as Commissioner Wance said, don't disregard or take away those that are single-focused either. Um I just to know if there's a, an incentive to get them cross-trained. Uh either moving up the ladder or incentive pay to uh get them cross-trained, so.
Yes, sir, just, just to add some comments, uh as far as incentive or cross-pay that are um uh salary, uh H R is working on that now, there's two options where you could get a bump in pay for the certification itself or actually get a stipend when you're operating in that paramedic role. Uh those are two options that we're evaluating now, but just to, just to comment on a couple of other things. My focus is, has to be, we we established the fire and EMS department, I'm looking at every aspect of the department. But my eyes are obviously on the eighty percent of of the call volume, which is EMS. I hear all the, the concerns, I see them. This did not happen overnight, we're not going to be able to repair it immediately. We just do not have the bodies immediately, we do not have the equipment or the vehicles to to handle that. Um so it 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 is going to be a methodical approach. Um but as I gather those personnel and that equipment, I will be able to have options to put peak-period units in service. If I notice that the volunteer stations don't have a paramedic working, I might be able to put an additional paramedic unit in service and float them in that area. It's going to provide me more options. As far as requirement to cross-train, I also understand I have several in current station employees that have approached me uh and said, hey, look, I just want to do paramedic. That is not going to hurt my feelings because there will always be a role for them in Carroll County. Um so that's why I'm saying, I don't want to exclude those people. Um the other units, I know it's a, um it's an approach that maybe a lot of people don't agree with. If we're only able to do two stations at a time. The, but at the end of the day, when we're done with that station, the complete burden of employment is removed from that station. The EMS funding has come to us, uh the E V O D money, the E M, E M uh twenty-four-seven money comes to us. We remove one station at a time from that complete burden. And we also do not have two separate employees operating in the same station, one from a station um employer and one from a county employer, so it's a cleaner system as well. Um the chase car, like I said in my presentation, it's about funding. Uh I came before you a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the the purchasing of the ambulance. It's to shorten that gap, uh it's to close that revenue gap that's needed for this new money to bring on these personnel. The volunteers need fundraising twenty-four-seven money um as well as EMS revenue to pay for their employees, we need the same thing. If I put a paramedic in a chase vehicle and they jump on volunteer ambulance X, that money goes to that station, it does not come back to the county for the cost of that paramedic. Um our pay scale, you know, I I don't know that we can compete pay scale-wise with uh some counties right now initially. So we are going to struggle to have employees, maybe our shift uh may be more attractive, you know. So we are going to deal with the same issues that all the other counties have uh as far as uh drawing paramedics. But I want to end with a, um I've had numerous um EMS-only people that are station employees come to me and say, look, they want the opportunity to get hired and cross-train. They're just not able to do it in their current role because, you know, due to financial, you know, difficulties, these stations cannot afford to pay for their training to cross-train. So that's an, you know, so that gives us another option of providing that pathway. So I just wanted to throw those things out there, but my eye is definitely on the immediate need as well as the long-term development.
Just, one, one question here, you're looking at the chase car for a paramedic. How many would you, you you slowly add one here and one somewhere else, how would you do that, Bob?
Well, I mean, chase vehicles, you can move them, you can either assign them to a region or you can um have them in one location, and let's say the thirty corridor, the Hanover, I mean, the um Limeboro, Manchester and Hampstead um paramedic units are all out. I can have a chase vehicle move over into that area. My recommendation is based on the pool, I can put an additional ambulance in service, which one just doesn't provide the paramedic, but provides that additional paramedic on a But provides that additional paramedic on a transport unit, which increases our units to four. Uh, but also too, based on the amount of applicants that we have for paramedic. We may, as a county government, may not be able to provide ALS service from all thirteen stations that provide that service. We may have to have regional medic units assigned and have them go in multiple directions. To run with a BLS unit. So it's all gonna be based on the applicant pool, um, just like anyone else is dealing with, who, who can draw the most paramedics.
Is that done many counties throughout the state, that chase car type thing?
I've seen chase cars utilized. Some people, it's because that's the only option they have. I've seen a lot of chase vehicles. You know, have successes and have failures. I've never used, uh, I've never really liked them because it requires more personnel. It requires a vehicle, but, you know, if, if, if it's all from one business where a chase vehicle is supporting another one of their units. That's fine, but for our situation, it does not help us with the issue of the revenue needs to follow the employee. It continues to allow the, the volunteer ambulance to bill for the service that our paramedic's gonna supply from that SUV.
Director McCoy, excuse my ignorance, but you can explain, can you explain to me the mechanics of how a chase vehicle works? Is that someone who's at their home or call or in a station? How does that unfold and work in practice?
Yes, sir. Very good. Um, a chase vehicle, you're basically putting a paramedic into an SUV with an additional, uh, paramedic equipment, drug box. Life pack, everything that that person needs. Uh, that person can be assigned to an ambulance, uh, assigned to a station on a twenty-four hour basis. They could be assigned to a, uh, uh, infield location and they just hover an area for a period of time. Uh, it can be done either way, but the purpose of that is to fill voids for paramedic units. Um, but the difference is, is that it cannot transport a patient. So you're not adding an additional ambulance. You're just bringing the paramedic to the BLS unit that has to run the call to transport that patient.
You said that's more expensive and not less expensive. I was thinking potentially it could save us money. How, how does it fall out financially?
Financially, like I said, if, if you have, I'm gonna use an example, if you have a station that we've not provided personnel to yet. We've not signed an MOU, we've not transferred the EMS billing. If that ambulance does not have a paramedic onboard and they run a chest pains call on their first due. And we run our county paramedic chase vehicle. What's gonna happen is that paramedic's gonna deliver that service, uh, which is primary. But from a business perspective, that per, that chase paramedic's gonna park that vehicle. He's gonna grab his equipment and he's gonna jump on the BLS unit and they're gonna transport. But the billing for that patient will be billed at the ALS level from the volunteer corporation. So the revenue for the work that that paramedic just performed will not be coming back to the county. And that's one of the main purposes that we were looking at, bringing the EMS revenue to the county, just like the volunteers. We need that revenue to offset that budget shortfall.
I got you. So it's a positive and a negative, so to speak.
Right, exactly.
But Director McCoy, are you're looking for today some direction on hiring for dual certification or single certification? I, I mean, we're not really, from my, maybe I missed something. You're not here to talk about chase cars and so forth, although it's, it's, it's informative. But not really what our objective is right now. Objective right now, do dual certification or to single certification? And you want some direction on that, is that correct?
That's correct. I just, I just want, uh, everyone to, uh, uh, I guess, uh, agree or, or give the approval that. Yes, we are, we are okay with hiring dual certified employees.
So do we need a motion on that?
I don't know if we'd need a motion. I think just, uh, you're getting the direction, um, from us. You know, with, you know, all the, all the information. Um, Commissioner Wans, you were lit up for a second. Did you wanna add in?
No, I, 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 I know that there are. Listen, this chase vehicle thing, I don't wanna get hung up on it and, and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Frazier, you wanting to pull the plug on that, I get it. But I think it needs to be discussed further. Because I know that many of the counties that are in the same situation that we are started that way and it worked very well. And I know, uh, Bob, that you're talking about the money following the person. We gotta remember here. Um, you know, the importance of, of number one, taking care of the patient. And I get the money part, but the, but the patient cares number one. And I do know that in many of the counties, um, that have started this way. Why couldn't you change the, the, the funding, um, so that the, 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 the billing followed the chase car? Um, we're talking about the takeover of the, or the takeover of buying the ambulances and everything anyway. Um, so if, if that would be the best way to do it. Uh, why not set it up that we would get a percentage of that? Because a Carroll County employee was upgrading that particular unit. Uh, and then that would help with the money following them, the employee a little bit. I think we could easily do that. And I do believe that, that, that would help with, with some of the, um, challenges that some of these outlying stations are faced with. Because it seems like we're just focusing on the Westminster and Sykesville stations right now. I, I think, I, I mean, we can tap on to a, to a, uh, an SUV contract that we buy. For the sheriff's department or whatever and get really cheap SUVs, probably get a deal on equipment. And that would be a way, I think, that we could expedite the way of, in a way of protecting our citizens. Um, so that, that was my only thought on that. I just don't want that conversation to die on the vine. I think it's got some merit. And, and getting back to what you're looking for today, I, I just wanna make sure. Everybody heard you say that the emphasis here is, yep, that's our number one priority to get cross trained people. But if I've got six people out here in Carroll County that have no intention whatsoever of wanting to be cross trained. They should be hired immediately.
Correct. Yep. I, I think, uh, I think we got in agreeance on that, uh, where the priority lies. I think, uh. You know, Bob, if you can, highlight more about the chase vehicle, uh, for next week as well, as we're moving forward. So we're all, again, it's important that we all understand, you know, at the base level, all these discussions that are happening. So I think you met your objective for today, uh, in direction, okay?
Commissioners. If I may, real quickly, I just wanted to address Commissioner Wans's question slash comment about the forty-four people. Um, last week, um, uh, um, we asked, the staff asked for a sort of guidance on where to go with the recommended budget. With regard to, um, firing EMS in terms of the number of personnel you might be interested in hiring. And, and so, um, the board, um, sort of landed on that, that number. But you are absolutely correct. There is no budget, nothing's been passed, that is not set in stone. Um, you know, that is, that is just a guide to, uh, budget staff and others to, uh, bring you a budget that you can work from. So, um, if, you know, if that's misunderstood out in the community, please, um, help us spread that word that it's definitely not a done deal.
Correct. Okay. Okay, unless there's further comment, let's, uh, continue move. Commissioner Boucher, did you have a comment?
I, I'd just like to add, you can emphasize the employee benefit of working for Commissioner Frazier.
It's true. That's a good point.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. The, uh, Carroll County Circuit Court's Family Law Administration. Uh, to discuss the FY twenty-two mediation and conflict resolution, uh, macro grant application and acceptance of award. And we have Corey, we have Nathan, okay?
Yes, sir. I was, I was, Ms. Walter was sick today, so I'm filling in for her. Um, we're coming before you today to request approval for our submission of the grant application for, uh, the macro conflicts resolution grant. Uh, this is one that we've been doing since twenty sixteen. The grant mostly provides for a position, uh, that's out of the family law office here at the circuit court. Uh, to provide ADR services to, um, different parts of the courthouse in civil cases. Uh, this is one that we've had a lot of success with since twenty sixteen and had a lot of support from the administrative office of the courts for. Uh, that position is a grant contingent position, so it does not, um, bind the county if we were to not receive that funding in the future. Uh, the budget application, all, and the application also provides for some training, both of that employee. And for our mediation community in the surrounding area, which we rely on for a lot of our, uh, referral mediations.
Okay. Corey, did you wanna add?
Um. No, I think Nathan covered it. Um, ADR just is, um, alternative dispute resolution. Um, that might be unfamiliar to you, but no, I think Nathan covered everything else.
Okay, and I like that there's no county cash match.
Yeah, it's the best part.
That is the best part. Any, uh, comments, thoughts?
Uh, move the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY twenty-two Marcos, whatever it is. Uh, conflict resolution grant application, accept the award.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, where's Commissioner Boucher?
I never ask that question.
Just bear with us for a second. Okay, what I'd like to do is just pause for a second, see if we can get Commissioner Boucher. Back on.
I, I think, yeah. I mean, it passed, even if he votes no, it passed.
I, I understand and I agree. I'm just giving that thirty second. Okay, let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Citizen Services, the FY twenty-two Community Partnership Agreement. We have. Where do we have theirs, Ms. Celine? Who's gonna be joining you, Celine?
Um, for this, um, we're, uh, gonna be reviewing the, the local management board. So it's Corey Hardinger and I will be presenting this to you today. Um, and I believe Scott Yard is on here for our next, um, agenda item as well, when we look at the COC NOFA, so. Um, I am joined with Corey Hardinger today. Um, she is our grants analyst for Carroll County Government. But she's also here with this presentation as the previous LMB manager for Carroll County. Um, we are requesting approval to submit the FY twenty-two Local Management Board Community Partnership Agreement and accept the award. Each of the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services provides funding opportunities at the local level to strengthen. Community-based services to children, youth and families with a focus on increasing childhood well-being with intentional efforts to address childhood trauma. Adverse childhood experiences and also a touch, um, to address race equity. The Carroll County LMB is requesting approval to support three local programs with these funds this year. As well as a planning and training grant that's going to provide for a new community needs assessment and development of a strategic plan. This request is also going to include funding of a local care team and the LMB administration. I'm gonna turn it over to Corey, who's gonna provide an overview of the recommended programs, um, and services identified for the funding. Um, and also, um, some additional information for you.
Thank you, Celine. So, um, very briefly, um, the connecting youth program began in twenty eighteen in Carroll County and. Serves an average of fifty-five to sixty-five youth each year. These youth receive barrier assessments to determine what is in their way of connecting to work or school. And then they also receive intensive case management services to then remove those barriers so that they, they, um, arrive at a place where they can. Um, become employed and stay employed, or perhaps go back to community college or engage in some sort of educational services. Um, sixty-one percent of all the youth that have been served thus far have connected to work. And the other important piece with this program is that these youth spend an average of three hundred and three days receiving services. So these are youth with a, a lot of barriers that take a lot of time to remove. And overall, they've served one hundred and forty-two individual youth since twenty eighteen. The wraparound program is a new program this year and this is a two-generation approach designed to assess, um, child and family functioning. So lots of times families that present for services, um, the child might be identified as in need of services, but when you take a look, the entire family is really struggling. So this program is designed to walk with families as they engage in community services and also do that in a coordinated collaborative way. So that families are really receiving everything that they need in that moment. Um, and, um. This relies on a systems navigator. So the navigator is the person that will be connecting with the family and also with the corresponding agencies. To really be the point person and the contact person for that family as they, as they enter, um, you know, whatever services they might need at the time. And they also, like the connecting youth program, they receive an assessment to determine their family functioning. Um, they may score as, um, in critical need or, um, thriving. And then that needs assessment is reviewed continuously with the family to make sure that the services are actually moving them in a positive direction. And, um. The next program is the suicide intervention program and this started in twenty twenty and so far has served a hundred and thirty youth. And what this program does is provide an immediate pathway to assessment and services for youth who are experiencing suicidal ideation. These referrals come from the school system, from sports coaches, parents, um, churches, private schools. Um, really anyone in the community can make a referral to this program on behalf of the youth. And what these youth receive is immediate assessment and connection to services, um. You know, with the hope that youth won't ultimately end up in the ER. So this is a way to kind of avoid that traumatic experience of, of presenting at the ER for suicidal ideation. This is a more direct line and a better connection to services. The other piece of this program is the outreach and advocacy in the community. So the suicide program works with the Suicide Coalition to raise awareness about suicide risk factors, to also, um, provide parents guides to what to do. If they have a youth experiencing suicidal, suicidal ideation. And also working to just improve community understanding of risk factors, um, including working with mobile crisis and the hospital. And then the last, the planning grant like Celine mentioned, um, the local management boards are required everything, every three years to do a needs assessment. So this, the last needs assessment was done in twenty nineteen, so this would be our updated assessment. And this year, the GSE has added these lenses of ACEs, Equity, Trauma, and, um, also research-based practices. So this program will include a community mapping project that will ensure that what we're offering to, um, citizens are programs that are based in science and evidence. And, um, looking for gaps in the community for those services as well. And then finally, local care team, which has been in existence since two thousand and eleven, is an interagency work group that, that connects families to resources. Um, through the use of a family action plan. And, um, sort of prioritizing what the family needs in that moment. And the nice thing about the wraparound program is that families that leave local care team will be. Referred immediately to this wraparound program so that they have a point person. Um, an individual dedicated just to them to kind of help them work through their family plan that was developed at the local care team meeting.
Okay, that was a lot of information.
It is, I know.
Now, it's wonderful. Any thoughts, comments?
Uh, I just wanna thank you for doing this. Having been a juvenile offender, I cannot emphasize enough how critical these programs are. And if you ever want me to come out and do a tour and talk to the kids, I'd be more than happy to do so. I think it's important for us as adults who've been through these traumatic times as children. To identify and relate to youth that are out there and give them hope, because one of the most devastating things to a child. Is to take away their hope, to think that making mistakes as juvenile will lead to the destruction of your adult life. So I am one percent on board with this. With that said, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY twenty-two. Community Partnership Agreement and accept the award.
I have a motion.
Sure.
And I have a second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any?
Yeah, I have a question before we vote on this.
Please.
Um, it says total allocation for Carroll County is four hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. But then after that, the local care team requests is another fifty-six thousand. So we're requesting additional money to cover all that? But we don't know whether we're getting that or what?
The local care team funding is, um, is part of the application, but it's a different source of funding. So the, the total request is, um, the four sixty-one plus the five, the fifty-six, eight sixty. So it's, it, it's all submitted as one application, but there's two different funding sources for the, for the money.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, I saw together we own it is, uh.
Yes.
One of the participants, Katie, is just, you know, again, a rock star that, uh. I've been working with, uh, with the pop-up pantries early on in March, April. Um, so, yeah, they're a good group. Appreciate all the work y'all are doing. Um, any other further comments, questions?
I did just wanna mention, as you, you will note on here, that, that there are general fund dollars put into the LMB each year. And forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty is what we are, um, what is in the recommended budget for FY twenty-two. Um, your approval of this application does not mean that you. Your approval of this application does not mean that you are approving in advance this operating budget request that's going to be coming through in, in your formal budget process. This is just that we're, we need to put it into this budget so that we can submit the application in its fullest extent. Because it's, because we have to submit this before you approve our final county budget.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification also. Okay, anything else? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. FY20 Continuum of Care Application and Awards.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm going to have, and it is a federal fiscal year 20, and Debbie and I can help to kind of explain that as we go through the, the presentation. But I did want to have everyone that we're having join us pull in by video if you're able, because this is a collaborative effort. So we are here seeking approval today to accept the Continuum of Care Planning Application and approve the match for HSP. The Continuum of Care Grant is a national competitively ranked application that offers funding to provide services and housing for the homeless. Due to COVID, and I want to say thankfully, this year, we did not have the requirement of actually submitting an application. This application is very involved. Although it is a good representation of the work that we do in our community for all those folks that are at risk and homeless. But we were, we are happy to report that Carroll County, because all of our projects were in good standing from last year, had an automatic renewal of all the projects that we had put in for, for last year. So joining me today, we have Tammy Black, the Executive Director of Access Carroll, who is our co-chair of the Continuum of Care alongside with me. We have Scott Yard, the Director of HSP. We have Amy Baker, Special Populations Program Director for the Health Department, and Debbie Stanford, our Grants Manager for the county. Each year we come before you, when we come before you for this application, we do like to give an overview of the work that's being done with our homeless population in Carroll County, and really all the things that are going into that. The Circle of Caring Homelessness Board's mission is really to empower all citizens in Carroll County to be self-sufficient and have stable housing and a safe, healthy life by maximizing community collaborations. I do need to say that our Circle of Caring Board does exactly that. Everyone comes together, and even in this pandemic, we still, on our virtual platform for our meetings, have 40 to 50 community partners still reaching out and attending those meetings, which I think is very telling of the community support that we have here in Carroll. Those organizations consist of faith-based governmental partners, Carroll County Public Schools, service providers, nonprofits, people with lived homeless, homeless experience, all supporting this mission that we have to end homelessness in Carroll County. The Circle's strategic goals focus on preventing and ending homelessness and breaking out the specific sub-populations, veterans, chronically homeless, families, youth, and children. And we do this so that we can analyze those different populations and really target the specific needs of those different areas. On your briefing paper, you will note, we did provide some data to show those different populations. And, and over the last three years, FY18, 19, and 20, what that data looks like. As you can see, the number of homeless veterans has dropped since this clear 18. The result we feel of that is because of a few different things that we have done and identified as the Executive Committee and the Circle. We, number one, have received HUDV vouchers, and that goes to support individuals in housing with case management supports provided by the VA. We also have our Veteran Services Program with Carroll County and the case management provided there. And we also have created the veterans as a priority and created a by-name list where we're looking at each individual veteran that we know that is homeless and intensively targeting supports to make sure that those veterans are receiving everything to help them become or remain stably housed. As you can also see, the number of people who are identified as chronically homeless, which the definition of that is disabled and homeless for one year or more, it's increased slightly from 110 in 2019 to 119 in 2020. And that's not a significant increase, but again, our Executive Committee has identified the chronically homeless subpopulation as our next priority focus. We are now working to create a by-name list for this population to ensure services are wrapping around them in an attempt to end homelessness through stable housing and supports. We've also been able to increase our allocation of mainstream housing vouchers. We now have a total of 109 housing vouchers, and we can target these individuals with those vouchers. Those vouchers are specific to people with a disability up to the age of 63. If you also look at the unaccompanied youth, age 18 to 24, this population does show our largest increase in subpopulations going from 45 to 65 in the past few years. The CSC does recognize this vulnerable population, and we continue to work to develop additional resources. The Bureau of Housing and Community Connections has recently received additional HSP funding for support for rapid rehousing for youth, which helps to address their need. And we also, as you heard Corey talking with the LMB, work very closely with them as they've developed these additional community programs that we're funding through LMB dollars that also address the youth, these, these unaccompanied youth, age 18 to 24, through the Connecting Youth Program, as well as the new program with Together We Own It with their Wraparound Family Services. Also to note that there was a slight uptick in the homeless individuals over the ages 62, rising from 38 in fiscal year 19 to 44 in fiscal year 20. Part of the reason we think that there was this uptick is that it's a natural reflection of the increase in older adults in the county overall. However, we also know that this population is vulnerable, and we need to continue to provide supports here as well. One of the things I think you will recall is during COVID, that was a great success, was we were able to target this population, and we were able to move anyone in shelter and in the encampments identified as this priority population because we did not want them to be at risk of contracting COVID. We were able to move them with funding we received related to COVID into a hotel. The best part of this was that these individuals that were hotel during this time with this emergency funding were able to provide, seek and find through assistance with HSP and our other supports to move into permanent housing, into rapid rehousing or housing choice voucher units. So that was a definite positive that we were able to coordinate with the entire team of supports that we have in the county. We also recognize that there is a current project underway with Spring Board Community Services that they are developing and that will address older adult needs. And with the homeless population, they will provide housing supports and case management as well. So we have a lot of things in the works, and I think people don't realize behind the scenes all the work that is being done, but we are certainly working as a great team. And I just want to say, through COVID, this team with the COC and beyond, and our Executive Committee, is in constant communication about the work that we're doing, COVID cases, and how we can best support these people. So I do want to turn it over to Debbie Stanford now to do an overview of the funding and the projects we're going to support through the COC application.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks, Celine. So we, through this piece of funding for homeless services, we, we are funding three things. One is our single point of entry for homeless services. We've on coordinated entry. This is a requirement of HUD funding and state funding, and that sits with, with HSP. And then we, we support nearly 40 units of permanent supportive housing. Most of this is devoted to chronically homeless. Everyone in those units has to be disabled, so services are wrapped around them and housing is provided. And then Citizen Services receives a small grant to administer the, the project. So the total grant award from HUD across the community is $422,210. The match that the county is providing for this round of awards is $33,500. This was included in your FY21 budget. It's for a total project of $455,710.
Is this FY20 or FY21?
Oh, did I say 20? I'm confusing it further. It was, the match is included in your 21 budget. This is funded through the federal budget in 20. So they're usually a year behind, and since we, this is funding the projects that are currently in place for fiscal 21. We didn't have to apply this year. We just got an award. So you did not see the application for this.
Okay, appreciate the clarification.
Okay. If I made it better or worse.
That's all good. Any thoughts, comments?
Yes, Ms. Tackel, you and your staff do very admirable work. Would you happen to know what percentage of the homeless is related to addiction issues? You know, mental and the addiction together? Does it break down real heavy that addiction is affecting this population?
I don't have that number before me right now, and I think Tammy Black could probably speak to that a little bit because she works with a lot of that population. And I don't know that we can get the number exactly, but I'm sure she can give you an overview of who she's seeing at Access that are, are working through that.
So I'll just say that I can't, I don't have the empirical number in form, in, in front of me, but I can tell you that based on both the emergency medical respite, of which 85% of those folks had a substance use disorder that we served over the summer. That was a small, finite group of, you know, folks that we had served just during that pocket of time. But we serve around 300 homeless folks here at Carroll, in Access Carroll, kind of in some transient form, whether it's acute or chronic. And more than 70% of those folks do have a substance use disorder. Interestingly enough, it's not all opioids. A lot of it's alcohol.
I, I appreciate that because I think that shows that by addressing the addiction issue, we can impact and reduce the homelessness. But thank you very much.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments?
I make the motion, the Board of Commissioners, accept FY20 Continuum, Continuum of Care Planning Application, and approve the match for HSP.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, I got a motion, a couple seconds. Just comments again, thank you so much for all y'all are doing. Just shows the partnership, the transparency, the non-competitiveness that you all are working together in this circle of care. Celine, I know I shared with you comments from Secretary, forgot his name, MTBA. Owings, wow. Secretary Owings, as I highlighted, how we are caring for our veterans homelessness situation, and his, his show of appreciation for all that our Citizen Services and our teams are doing. So thank you so much. Any other comments? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we got 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Let's move on to a question of approval to hire grant-funded contractual housing stability coordinator position. And I see Danielle, and I see Celine, and now I see Scott again. Okay. Who wants to take it?
You love.
Okay. So back again so quickly. It's as though I never left. But I'm here before you. We brought Danielle Yates in on the, the session at this point. She's our Bureau Chief of Housing and Community Connections. Debbie Stanford is still with us, our Grants Manager. And we are here before you to request approval to hire a grant-funded contractual housing stability coordinator, coordinator position. We, I, I know that earlier today, Commissioner Boucher was recognizing new, new hires through the county, and one of those, he announced was our current Housing Stability Coordinator that is through a contractual position with grant funding. And he was our first position this way that we've hired. It's Javier Toro, and he has hit the ground running and been doing a great job and really showed the need for this position. And we have been able to identify through some grant funding, additional funding that could support a second housing stability coordinator, and we'll go into some detail now on that. Originally, the Department of Citizen Services had been awarded a total of $893,000 in additional ESG COVID Round 1 and 2 funding. The Round 1 funding was $257,000, and the Round 2 was $663,000. Of that total funding, Citizen Services held on to 3, a little over $300,000 to administer for eviction prevention and to support other related expenses regarding COVID. The remaining $593,000 was passed on to HSP to administer, administer services related to rapid rehousing, eviction prevention, and then outreach. So within the $300,000 that we administer, we have budgeted $53,000 to support additional motel costs for Spring Board Community Services for their domestic violence, emergency sheltering needs because they expanded capacity, or they have limited capacity due to social distancing because of COVID. So we wanted to have funds available for hoteling for them. We had also allocated additional funding for, if the emergency rest, medical respite would need to reopen if we had a surge. And over time, we've realized that pot of money may not be needed for that. So we're looking to reallocate those dollars and then move them over. We'll be asking the HCD for a budget modification to move that funding over to support this additional housing stability coordinator. One of the biggest things you are aware of is the eviction moratorium. Earlier this week was lifted. With that, the court systems are going to be hearing, and they are hearing eviction cases related to failure to pay rent. And that, what that means to us is that we're going to start to really see more and more people seeking assistance that are going to be losing their homes, and we are hoping to be able to prevent that because we have funding available through other, through these grants to use for eviction prevention. And HSP is the gatekeeper for those programs that people should be referred to. I'm going to turn this over to Danielle now to provide some additional details related to the impact of this position and review the funding that we have for the position, for the duration of the, the position. And as I said, it is a contractual, just a contract position with grant funding to support the, the full amount.
Yes, so good afternoon, Commissioners. So as Celine had noted, we are here today to discuss the possibility of receiving another position for the Housing Stability Coordinator. Our Housing Stability, Stability Coordinator Position assists families who have been financially impacted by the pandemic. HSP has already assisted over 100 families with eviction prevention assistance during the state of emergency. So as we noted, while the district court system is now transitioning into Phase 4 as of March 15th, they have now begun hearing non-payment of rent cases. This means that the assistance needed for eviction prevention will indeed increase. So while providing funding to avoid eviction prevents a family from immediate concerns of losing their housing, this does not always resolve the problem that led to that eviction. Our Housing Stability Coordinator can work with these families to complete a needs assessment. They identify resources and services that can further assist families and prevent the need for additional eviction assistance prevention in the future. In addition, our Housing Stability, Stability Coordinator works very closely with staff from Human Services Program Incorporated to administer additional case management supports to clients who are receiving rapid rehousing assistance. By doing this, we can ensure financial stability and stable housing for our folks once the subsidy assistance is ended. Would there be any additional information that we can provide to you regarding our requests?
Nope. No comments?
So, just a question on my part, if I can, please. I appreciate, well, I got to get this out, Celine, and you'll understand why I'm saying this. I applaud the additional monies that you provided to Spring Board, and I'll leave it at that because they're, they, they truly needed that, and you know why I'm telling you that. Second, I'm a little bit challenged by something that you said, however, when you were talking about respite funding. You say they may, we may not need to address that. Not we will not have to, but may, which leads me to my concern here. While I think this is an incredibly needed position, we, we, we're challenged by adding positions here, as you well know, out of the typical way in which we do that. Now, I understand this is grant monies, but it could very well be a temporary position because it's contractual. So I, I just want to, I just want to point that out. It's not that I'm against this position, but we've had other departments and agencies come to us for positions out of the usual cycle that we do that in, and they've been denied. And they've been denied.
And I do want to say this is completely, and we are, when we hired the first position, this is a, this is a temporary position. We are marketing this as a one-year position. This is not a rolling on position. This is as a result of the grant funding we have on, on the books. And the need that we have for this. So people that we are hiring into this position. They understand this is not, this isn't a grant contingent position. This is a contractual position. Similar to when we hired a contractual position in accounting. To help with all the incoming. All the, the additional funding that we were receiving. It's, it's a straight contract. It's not, it's not a contingent position.
Okay, and I, and I, listen, I, I hear the need. I truly do. But what happens at the end of the term of this contractual position when you've identified that you truly need to have this person remain? Then I guess you're gonna try to re-up it with grant funding or how would that roll? Or are you thinking that this is, we're good absolutely for this period of time and then we can let that individual go?
So, so what are, what my thought is, and I think Debbie, if you wanted to speak to it as well. Because of where we are with COVID and the grant funding that keeps coming in surrounding that and the recovery from COVID. There is potential that more money would come down, that we would have administrative dollars to continue this position if there was a need. So we would, you know, as we're moving through, we would reassess that. And if that was the case, we would come back before you for an extension of this position with those funds. Because obviously each time we get grant funding, we are coming to you for approval of acceptance of that funding and then like. Excuse me, coming up with the plan on how we're going to spend those dollars. So you would be essentially approving that continuation in that grant acceptance presentation.
And, and just to add, commissioners, there are two streams of federal funding coming specifically for this need, eviction prevention. So, and, and it would allow staff to be hired and we have not received the funding yet. One is the one that we were notified of this week, Commissioner Vance. Both are federal. One was through the CURSA Act, which was passed in late December. And then the American Rescue Act also passed another large, large pot of funding for eviction prevention. Those funds are going to go over the next four years. So if we, I think if we need, so this, these funds expire in September of twenty-two. So it's a little bit more than a year that we have this funding available that we're asking for approval for today. As we get to the end of that, we're going to have other dollars available. And as Celine said, I think that we will have money available in the grant world to cover these. But we would come back to you and ask for permission to use them in that way. We also have a CDBG grant that we haven't even touched and we have dollars in that for staff. So never in my wildest dreams would I think that I would be saying that we have a lot of money to cover this. But we really do have a lot of money to cover this in an ongoing way if needed.
And, and now you just sold the deal. Thank you.
Okay. So we got a motion in.
I'll move the board of commissioners approve the hiring of a second full-time contractual housing stability coordinator position.
Second.
Now we got a motion in second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five oh. Ms. Celine's with us, right? And we're going to talk about, what are we going to talk about? Bit approval for personal care services. And I see Bobby and Celine and Gina and Maureen. So who wants to start?
Yes, I'll start. Good morning, commissioners. We did go out and solicit statement of qualifications to provide non-medical home care services. And what we did was. Look at the contract and these services are for the senior care program and the duration of the contract would be for four years. The evaluation committee reviewed the statement of qualifications. And through that review, the highest ranked firms were home centrist personal care and right at home. And if you have any questions about the project itself, I'll turn it over to the ladies with Bureau on Aging.
Okay, thank you. Celine, did you want to give a little bit more specifics on this?
So I'm, I'm going to have Gina give the, the, the information on our senior care program and, and I'm sure you folks are familiar with that. We come to you every year with a renewable award from MDOA for, for those funds. But I'll have Gina just give an overview of the need for the contracts and why it's important for us to have these. The, these contracts on file and have these resources available for our, our participants in the program.
Now I can't hear you, Gina.
Gear wheel.
I'm not going to say it.
Check your gear wheel.
And here we go. It's the next chapter of the gear wheel saga.
I'm not going to say it. I would not disrespect.
You can provide the overview and Bobby can fill in any of the, the. Information if I'm, if I'm not able to, but what would you with the senior care program? We can hear you now, Gina.
You're right. It's the saga of figure well, your will. First time it's happened to me in a while. So with the, the senior care program provides services to qualifying older adults, sixty-five plus years of age to assist them with remaining in the community. And divert them from assisted livings and nursing home placement. The program provides, we might pay for medications or home delivered meals. But the, the two services that are, that are covered under the, these contracts are personal care and tour service, which is basically like housekeeping. So the budget for the, the senior care program participants is approximately three hundred dollars per month. That's our local cap. But we do have the ability to pay up to five hundred dollars per month in services for the individuals in the program. For the people that are currently in the program that receive these services, it's a total of thirty-eight clients. And again, the, the services that fall under this contract enable people to remain in their homes. The importance of having the contracts is, is so that with multiple entities is so that individuals have a choice of the provider that they want to utilize. And again, it's a fantastic service that's provided by the program.
Have we seen an increase in number from thirty-eight or?
An increase in the number of clients in the program?
Correct.
Now that we, we typically run with our allocation that we receive, that the entire allocation for the program is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars for the current fiscal year. And so we typically are able to receive, or I'm sorry, at one time provide services somewhere between fifty and sixty individuals, depending on. How much they, you know, they're allocated to for the funding for each month. And so we also frequently have people that, that come off the program and then roll new ones into the program. So we really have not seen an increase in the number of individuals. I, I think because the, the hourly rates for these services is, is kind of increasing and employers are preparing for the fifteen dollar minimum wage increase. It, it could actually result unless we receive additional funding from the state, unless people being served in the program, unfortunately. Which is why like the, the two, the top two, I mean, you'll, you'll see through the paper that Maureen submitted that that hourly rate is, is lower than the other two.
Thanks. Any? Questions?
If, if I missed it in the details, I apologize, but you're suggesting that both the top two. Successful bidders would be providing these services, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I just, yeah, I see you have them both listed. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to board of commissioners, awards the contract for personal care services to home centrist personal care and right at home.
I have a motion. All second. Okay, we have a couple seconds. Any other comments? Questions? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We got five. Okay, thank you very much, ladies. We will go into open admin after our afternoon session. We're done, right, Celine? No more for you?
I'm done. I, I just wanted to hang out with you guys for a little bit longer, so.
I'm sure that's true.
Like, wait, why are you still on? Okay, we will go into open admin after our afternoon session. Do I have any public comments?
We have one commenter on the line. Let me unmute him. If you want to give the overview of our.
Okay, while it's being unmuted, you'll have three minutes. There's not opportunity for dialogue. It's an opportunity to share your thoughts and opinions and although there will not be dialogue. Please let it be known that we will get back with you appropriately. And let's just go from there. Okay.
Caller, if you could identify yourself and begin speaking.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon. I guess we're right there on the cusp of both at this point of the day. This is Michael Weiner again from Sunshine Way. Just want to keep reaching out to you guys, the board. Want to keep reiterating the issue that our community would like to meet. We would like to discuss. Our, the problem that we have on our road. We owe it to our children and we owe the, the, the opportunity to be safe. It's the responsibility of the community, as is the responsibility of the board of commissioners, to work together. And to compromise on solutions that, you know, we can make work. We would like to have a town hall style meeting in an evening where everybody can attend. Everybody from the county, everybody from the community that's interested. And again, we'll keep reaching out until we can get a response and something in the works. But again, we need to keep working together. We cannot let this issue just go away or delay it for any period of time. Someone's going to get hurt and then we're all going to look at ourselves and go, man, we should have, we should have been more adults. We should have all acted together and been responsible. And I just hope that doesn't happen. So please, again. The community is interested in working with the county. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Again, there's no open admin now. Do we have any other callers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what I need is a motion to recess and reconvene at one P M.
Still moved.
Okay, I got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Hey, Ed, Ed, just FYI, I've received word, as you maybe did too. The governor is apparently going to make major announcements in, in, in reference to the vaccination policies in the state at two P M today.
Okay, yeah, I, I did look at my phone. I. We, we can hype, we, we can speculate what he's going to say, whether he's going to recommend to go to two, but we'll see. I know he's increased the task force for recognizing minorities, the African-American, Latino communities. I know that. So it'll be interesting what he says at two P M. I have a Chamber of Commerce along with Ed Singer at twelve P M till one, but we will reconvene at one P M. I believe we all got eyes. Recession.